Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin the County Planning Commission meeting this morning. If you could all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the clerk take your role, please?
Commissioner McGee?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Item number four, public comments. This is a point in the agenda where we allow the public to speak on any topics that are not on the agenda today. Do I have anybody here? I don't have any cards that would indicate that, but... Okay, moving on. Item five, approval of the October 23rd, 2014 minutes.
Move approval?
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Comments? None? Okay. You've got to do your clicky thing. Mouse is over there. Okay, minutes approved. Item six, approval of the October 30th, 2014 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move as proved as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Okay. Yeah, they indicated you were not present. PL 12-0163, Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation project staff.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, commissioners. For the record, I'm Christina Rizari-Bouro, case planner and of staff of the planning division. Before I start my presentation today, I'd like to call your attention to some exhibits that were received after the planning commission staff report was released to the public. Exhibit 15 contains four letters received from the public, and the county response to those comments is also attached. Exhibit 16 is a clarification to condition 32, which is regarding the equity sharing agreement for the affordable housing project. The requirement section of that condition was clarified to specifically designate who the person in the county is to oversee the agreement. We have a late submittal item, which is exhibit 17, and that contains two letters from Tim Cohen representing the Pyro Neighborhood Council and Rancho Temescal. And also, county response to those comments is attached to that letter. And finally, we have an email, which is exhibit G, from Dave Wareham, who's the... Also, there's a county response to that comment. So for exhibits 15, 16, well, actually, all of the exhibits, we review... Staff reviewed them yesterday, and there has no new issues raised in these attachments. So before I start my portion of the presentation, I'd like to have staff, Ms. Kari Finley, come up to the podium to discuss the framework of what the project is. The project before you today is an affordable housing project that is proposed by the applicant, which is the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, and they're proposing a 24-unit multi-residential development in the community of Pyro. So she's going to lay the framework and background for the Affordable Housing Law with regards to state and county regulations, and also the density bonus law that was... And county regulations, and the county regulations were just passed by your board... Your commission and the board in March of last year. So I'll have Ms. Finley come up.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, and members of the commission. And I'm Kari Finley, and I'm the planning division's housing planner. You might recall that I've been here recently with both the density bonus and the last couple of housing elements. So the planning directors asked that I kind of laid the framework of the Affordable Housing and Density Bonus Law and kind of refresh your memories on some of that, because it's pretty complicated, and then how it applies to this project. The primary law that applies here is section 6519... 915 of the government code and the associated sections. In that code, this is the state density bonus law. It mandates that if the developer provides a specified minimum number or minimum percentage of affordable units and ensures their affordability for 30 years or longer, then they are guaranteed an increase in density above what the general plan and zoning ordinance provides for, and also incentives, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. Then the county recently adopted section 8116. It was an update to affordable housing and density bonus provisions. The board adopted it in October 2013, and your commission reviewed it in September 2013, and then there were some minor amendments made in March of this year. These provisions... This is a 100% affordable project, and that's why these provisions apply to this project.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
What is affordability? How do you define it?
We have... There's a slide in your... Or a table in your staff report that defines, you know, the different income levels for the different income... The affordability categories. They have extremely low, very low, and then moderate and upper. Those are found on page 11 of your staff report.
Who sets those standards?
So the... Standards are set by HUD, and each year, there's a median income level assessment that's distributed... Well, we get it from HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and the median income for the state of California, family of four. And then these are calculated based on that. And you can see in here, it talks about how extremely low is less than 30% of the median income. Very low is between 30 and 50% of the median income, and very low is... Low is 50 to 80% of the median income and so forth. And it's all explained in detail here on page 11.
It's a statewide standard, then, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then also, I just wanted to note that the density bonus provisions are... Are all the allocations are shown in section C on page 7 of your staff report. So another section of the government code that applies to this project, because it's an affordable housing project, are... Is section 65589.5. And these... It's... This government code sets... Very explicitly sets forth these mandatory findings for denial of an affordable housing project. And there's a complete discussion, again, in your staff report, and it's analyzed, I think it's section I, page 43. And these are... Is a very brief summary of what those are. The first one is that it had... That you have to show that the county, our jurisdiction, has met or exceeded its share of regional housing need allocation pursuant to our housing element and the allocation that's provided to us by the state. And we have shown in our housing element, we have a certified housing element, and we have shown that we have adequate inventory, which means land available to build that, but it hasn't been met because they have not all been built for our planning period, which is 2014 to 2021. So we're just in the beginning of this planning period. So we cannot make this finding for denial. And then the other...
Sorry to bother you again, but this is preparatory to what's happening later. So what you're talking about is a county-wide standard, not a community-wide standard?
The regional housing need allocation is for the entire unincorporated area, and then each city has their own allocation as well.
Well, how does the Pyro community fit into that? It's not a city as such.
They're part of the unincorporated area. So it's part of our county housing element's regional housing need allocation.
Okay, but the standard is the entire county, is what you're saying, not the community itself?
Yes.
Okay.
So just briefly, the other four findings include that the project would have a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety, that denial of the project is required in order to comply with a specific state or federal law, that the development project is proposed on land zone for ag or resource protection or preservation, and that the project is inconsistent with both the zoning ordinance and general plan land use designations. And staff could not make any of these findings.
Excuse me. Would we have to make all of those findings, or any of those findings?
Any of those findings.
Thank you.
It's... Okay. So again, the proposed project includes 24 units, affordable units, and the 24 is the total units, which includes the... Their density bonus. And I just wanted to review this with you. The general plan and zoning allow 21 units on this site. With 35%, it allows 28 units, which is mandated by state law. They are guaranteed that if they choose to build. They could have requested 28 units. And the county density bonus ordinance also has provisions for 100% affordable projects that could allow up to 50% density increase, which would total 31 units. And what they've asked for is 24, which is less than the 35% that's guaranteed by the state density bonus law. So does that make sense? Is that clear? Okay. So I just want to make that clear, because it all plays out in the bigger picture. Also, under state law, they could have requested... They're entitled to incentives, and they could have requested less parking, additional or alternative incentives, and waivers. And I'll talk a little more about their specific incentives in just a second here, but waivers are... So incentives, they are guaranteed by state law. If they... They up to three incentives, and because this project is 100% affordable, they can say, "We need these three incentives to build this project." A waiver would be if they ask for their three incentives, and then they say, "But you know what? The only way we can build this is we also need a height increase, so we're going to build a third story, and we're asking that you waive that development standard." So the state law provides a lot of flexibility for affordable housing. Here, and I'll show you the example. These are specific examples.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, but I need...
Yes.
This is a definitional situation for me. Incentives, okay?
Yes.
What incentives? Are we pulling those out of the air? Are they specific? Okay.
This... Okay, and that's what I'm getting to right here with this slide. It's development standards that don't allow them to fit all the density on that site, essentially, or the whole project. And they can't... For example, we have, in some areas of the code, we have requirements for open space onsite. And if they say, "Well, I can't meet this open space requirement. Can I get a deviation from that?" They're allowed to request that. The state law says that you can... You can try to negotiate some of the different development standards that would be more... Maybe more desirable for the decision-makers, but that in any case, they're allowed three incentives.
But the final say on whether or not they receive those calls from county council or approve?
Well, they are guaranteed three.
Well, three what, though, ma'am?
Well, it can be any of these standards.
Well, I understand what you're saying there, but you have no discretion to say no?
Not really.
County Council? Incentives? Discretion to approve or disapprove?
It's... If it's a negotiation, and if there's something that seems like it...
Well, if it's a negotiation, you must be able to approve or disapprove.
If you can show that it's a public health and safety issue.
So it falls back on health and safety?
I think that's the only way.
That's correct, and if there's a disagreement about the incentives, then I think you go to government code 65589.5, and then it goes to a matter of feasibility. Are you... Is the jurisdiction's disallowance of an incentive making the project infeasible? And if so, then you have to make one of the findings that basically allows it, the jurisdiction to disallow that incentive.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I just want to know the background here.
That's fine. That's why I'm here, trying to help with that. So these are some examples, but they're not all-inclusive, of the types of development standards that they could request as an incentive, such as an increase in height limit. So if we had a, you know, 30-foot height limit, they could say, "Well, I need 35 or 40," or "another story," which is also listed here. Reduction in number of parking spaces, decrease in landscaping, reduction setbacks, increase in lot coverage. Just, you know, the kind of standard... Development standards, if you will, are all things they can request as an incentive for the affordable housing. Then when we bring it down to this project, these are the incentives that they have brought forward. The first one is that the required parking can be located in the rear setback area. Typically, you can see the second column shows you that what the non-coastal zone ordinance and the development standards require. Typically, parking's not allowed in the rear setback. The property line wall on the southeastern property line usually is supposed to have a solid six-foot-tall masonry wall, and on that... In that particular location, they are requesting an eight-foot chain-link fence, I believe, with meshing, and also a vegetative buffer, I believe. And then for landscaping, they're exceeding the total landscaping, but in the interior parking area, they're providing 3% instead of 10%. But the total landscaping exceeds the overall requirement for landscaping. So these are the three incentives that they have requested with this project.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we'll discuss this a little bit later, but when we get to condition number 19, the landscaping, I'm going to be looking specifically at the compatibility of the agriculture next door. This relates back to our Egg City condition that we did. We had the 150-foot bone buffering, but there was an issue of foreign introduction of plants into the agricultural community. So just so everybody knows, I want to discuss condition number 19 about that.
That concludes my portion. I'm going to turn this over to Christina to talk about project details, and I'll be available for questions, for additional questions after the presentation as well.
Thank you, Kari. So getting back to the proposed project. The project is located in the community of Pyro, which is in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. It's approximately eight miles from the city of Fillmore, which is to the east of Pyro, and it's about a mile or so from State Route 126, and about nine miles from the county line, which is the Ventura-L.A. county line. The Pyro community is a mixture of agricultural, open space, residential, and commercial properties. I believe there's about 1,000 residents in the community of Pyro. So this is an aerial photograph of the site. The project site is approximately 1.3 acres in size. There, it... Center Street abuts the project site to the north, and Market Street abuts the project site to the south. There is a mixture of commercial development at the northern portion of the project site. Waring Park is also in the north... Northeastern portion of the community in relation to the project site. And there's currently an agricultural production operation just east of the project site. And it's important to note that this property that's adjacent to the project site is zoned residential property right now. So in the future, it could be converted into residential use. So the zoning in general plan, there is a lot of zoning in general plan designations here, but briefly, the project site is zoned residential plan development, 12 dwelling units per acre. And north of the project site is also residential, 6,000 square feet. We have a single commercial property west of the project site, and from south of the project site, it's RPD, six dwelling units per acre, as well as this crop production parcel here. And on the other side, closer to the river, is open space 80 and open space 160 acres. Yes.
I have a question. You can see it better on this...
Yeah.
...on this handout. Of the area that's currently in... Is it Lemons, the orchard?
I believe it's Lemons and Avocados.
It's just a sliver that's also zoned RPD 12 dwelling units per acre. Would you say that that's a... How many square feet is that?
I'm not sure how many square feet that is.
But it's a tiny sliver of land.
Right.
It's...
The portion of that project site is RPD 6.
Yeah, but it's a tiny portion. I mean, we're only talking about a parcel. The project parcel is what, one and a half acres?
1.38.
Yeah, so that looks like maybe 5,000 square feet?
I can get the exact number for you, but I'm not sure what it is off the top of my head.
Okay, and then just beyond that blue line, we have open space, and that's what the...
This, open space 80?
Open space 80?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the area that's delineated... If you took your point... Yeah, okay. I'm looking at the wrong spot. I'm looking over here. Okay, so the area... That area is open space 80?
Yes.
Okay.
This area, and then this area up here is open space 160. It's confusing. There's a lot of zonings, designations out here.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering how practical it would be to develop that sliver into housing?
Well, it would have to... You know, whatever the property owner wants to propose, it'd have to meet the setbacks and the lot coverage for that area. We... I don't know if it's a single lot or a double lot, so it just depends on what the specifics of the lot are.
Is that sliver a separate parcel that isn't here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duquesne, just to make sure, for clarity, the property to the east of the project site is all residential up until that line that Christina is drawing the red line on now. So it's... So entirely along the eastern side of the proposed project site is residential. Some of it is RP 12, most of it is RP 6, RPD 6. So the open space doesn't start till the middle of the orchard, as you see there. So it is entirely residential to the east of the project site.
Just the general... Yeah.
But that sliver itself is not a separate parcel, is it?
No, it's a zoning line.
And so I just want to point out the general plan designations for the area. North of the project site is residential, 15 dwelling units per acre, and residential 6 dwelling units per acre. The south side is residential, 6 dwelling units per acre, and the east is open space, 80 acres, and the west is R6 and commercial.
Christina? Well, I'm thinking about it. And I know the area, but point north, okay? That was one of the things I noticed as I read the report for the uninformed, or which way is north? Because we're referring north-south. If you could put it in the future staff report, maybe have a legend to point to north, it references...
Okay.
Allows us to reference much better.
Sure.
Thank you.
So to visually orientate yourselves with the site, I have some pictures of the project site. It's currently undeveloped right now. So here, to the left picture, is looking north towards Center Street. Center Street's in the background. And this picture to the right is of the site looking south towards Alley, which is a small road that intersects a portion of the parcel. It doesn't intersect, it ends at a portion of the parcel. This is a picture of the Center Street and the project site, and we're looking east towards the bridge. And then the picture on the left is looking west on Alley. This is the small road I was just talking about.
Excuse me, can I back you up one slide?
Yeah.
So we're looking... We're on, basically, on Orchard looking towards Center Street and the bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on... We're standing on the project site at the end towards the western corner, and we're looking towards the bridge, which is in the background, east.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the picture on the right is of Market Street, and we're looking west. And this is just looking west on Center Street. And we're standing on the project site.
Can I back you up another slide? Slide on the right, looking west toward on Market Street. I see pavement and dirt. Is any of that publicly maintained?
It is a public road, and the county transportation department has put a condition on the project that would require the applicant, as part of their construction, to do road improvements to the site and provide curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on the parcel's frontage. So it's going to be on this side of the street, just on the frontage of their parcel.
So that area that appears to be gravel will be paved?
Yes, with cutters.
By the developer?
Yes, with gutters and sidewalks.
And what's the width of that alley?
I believe it's...
You referred to it as an alley, but it's identified as...
No, this is Market Street. This is not the alley.
What's the width?
I believe it's in condition 36?
Okay, thank you.
I believe it's 36 feet.
Okay.
But we can...
Mr. Chair, the right-of-way there is 40 feet, and the applicant will be required to improve their half-width of the roadway to county standard. The road itself is about 30 feet wide as it exists, as it goes toward Market Street. Excuse me, it goes toward Orchard on the west.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a background for the project. A preliminary review of the project was discussed at the county's development review committee, and this was a discussion before the submittal of the project to the county for its environmental review and the discretionary permit process. So that was held on August 2014. So that was held on August, uh, August 30th of 2012. And some of the issues that were discussed during that meeting were, uh, the density bonus calculations and incentives, discretionary permit, uh, tree permit requirements, um, the landscape plan in regards to the Piru Area Plan scenic resources policy, and development regarding the Piru area, the Piru Community Design Guidelines, which are part of the Piru Area Plan. And some other issues briefly that were discussed were grading plan and drainage plan requirements, flood plan requirements, and road improvements on Market Street. So what's the project for you? Um, the applicants have requested that a planned development be issued to authorize the construction, uh, operation and maintenance of a 24-unit multifamily residential development. It's a 100% affordable, uh, housing project, and it's for low and very low income in the categories that Kari, uh, did, uh, mention earlier. They range, uh, the apartments range in size from one bedroom to three bedrooms. There's three separate buildings with eight units each. Um, and there's going to be a community center, a basketball court, community garden, and children's play area. And the onsite amenities, um, will be, which are the ones I just mentioned, will be available for public, uh, and residential use, although I'm not sure, I, I don't think the garden will be. Um, there's a landscape and landscape screening that is proposed, and there's 45 off-street parking spaces. And these are calculated into two separate parking lots, one off of Center Street and one off of Market Street. And it's also important to note that the 45 spaces, that's, uh, six additional spaces than what is required by the zoning ordinance. The applicants are also requesting that, um, a tree permit be granted to authorize removal of six heritage trees, which are protected trees under the, uh, county tree protection ordinance. And this is required due to the development, um, the construction, uh, cannot support the existing trees there. So what they, what the applicant has proposed is to, um, offset the loss of these trees by planting a mixture of seven oak, uh, coast live oak and sycamore trees. And the applicants are also requesting, uh, that a parcel map waiver voluntary merger be granted to authorize, um, the, um, merger of the two existing lots that are out there on the site to one existing lot. And this is required because if they were not merged, um, building A would be on two separate lots. And that's not, um, not permitted, uh, per the zoning ordinance.
Excuse me, just for a second here.
Yes.
In the beginning, it mentioned, uh, the removal of six pepper trees. But on port, uh, page 39 of the report, it talks about removal of six oaks. So I think you've got a typo there, unless one, one of the others-
They're, uh, I believe they're pepper trees? Yeah, pepper trees. And they're, um, going to be replaced by, um, seven coast live oak and sycamore.
But it says on page 39 that it's removing, uh, six oak trees.
Oh, that's, that's a mistake.
Yeah, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. So here's some pictures of the site, um, in regards to site plan. The blue, um, is the development. There's, as I mentioned earlier, there's three buildings, building A, B, and C. Um, they are, uh, going to be eight units per building, and it's two story, two stories for the whole development. There's going, the parking lot, uh, off of, of Center Street is located here. And in the middle of the development, there's the community center and the play area, and the basketball courts and the community garden is towards Market Street. And then this is the, um, the driveway off of Market Street. And, yeah, okay, I'll show you that. So here's the elevations. This elevation is looking, um, let me get that for you, first looking. Uh, all the elevations are looking north, and this is just, uh, artist's rendering of what the development would look like.
How tall is that, uh?
35 feet.
75 feet?
35.
35, okay.
No, not 35.
I thought two-story, okay, 35 feet. So, um, those are clerestory windows up at, at the top? Those, um, those, in the artist's rendering, there's, uh, smaller windows, those are- attic vents, okay.
And you say that's, that's, uh, looking north, that's the north side of the building?
Yes.
So that would be Orchard Street there?
We're looking north, uh, this is Center Street.
Pardon me?
Center Street.
Okay.
This is also another elevation, and this is also, uh, looking north, um, in the other direction, towards Orchard. And this is just another elevation of the site. An artist's rendering of what the community center and the, uh, recreational uses inside the development would look like. And this is a floor plan of the site. Um, as I mentioned before, it's eight units per building. And all of the entrances to the, uh, the dwellings would be, would be, uh, located inside. So there's no, um, outside, it's, it's not on, the, the entrances are not on Center Street or on, or off of, um, the eastern property line, they're inward. And this is the community center elevations. Um, the community center is approximately going to be built at 14 feet 6 inches. And here's the landscape plan of the site. Uh, and the staff reports mentioned several times that there's going to be a vegetative buffer on the eastern property line with the eight-foot-high chain-link fence and a, um, mesh, that mesh, um, screening on the fence. And I believe it's about 32% is the total landscaping for the site. And there's going to be native, non-invasive plants, uh, required to be landscaped there per, uh, condition 19 of the landscape plan. So the environmental review for the project. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared, um, and analyzed by county's agencies and staff. The MND, uh, and, uh, identified two, but, um, impacts to biological resources. It's both plant and animal species, which is item 4A of your initial study. There's two mitigation measures proposed for the project. The first mitigation measure is requiring, um, monitoring and maintenance of native replacement trees. And I discussed this earlier, that the seven coast live oak trees and sycamore trees were going to be, um, planted in replacement of the heritage trees that were lost. And the mitigation measure requires a five-year monitoring program to make sure that the trees are viable. And, uh, the second mitigation measure is a nesting bird pre-construction survey. Basically, the applicant, um, must conduct, um, their construction process outside of the designated time periods that nesting birds would be in season. And if they do not do that, then they would have to do a, um, nesting bird survey and identify where the birds are. And if there are any birds, they'd have to provide a buffer and, um, to make sure that the birds are not, uh, disturbed. And so these mitigation measures will reduce the, um, potentially significant impacts to a less than significant level. We, uh, received one comment letter of, um, regarding the MND, and that's exhibit C of, um, ex- uh, exhibit C of the Radememorandum Number One, which is exhibit 15 that you just got, uh, recently. And the public review period was from October 25th of this mo- of this year to November 25th of this year. And the project was to the State Clearing House, and the Office of Planning and Research did not provide any comments regarding the project. So we have another element, we have elements to the project that require findings to be made on, on the discretionary permit, and also consistency with the Piru Area Plan and the Piru Community Design Guidelines. So these mandatory permit findings are required for all discretionary permits. They include, uh, that development is consistent with the intent of the general plan, uh, and we found that it is. Uh, the proposed development is compatible with the character of the surrounding legally established development. We did also find that that was true. And the pro- the proposed development does, would not be, um, obnoxious or harmful or impair the utility of the neighboring property. And that the proposed development, uh, would not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, and convenience or welfare. And that the, the proposed development is allowed, it actually should be by, uh, plan development permit. And that is compatible with existing and potential land uses in the general area where the development is located, and also that it is on a legal app. So as I mentioned, all these findings could be made regarding the discretionary plan development permit. And we have the Piru Community Guide, the Piru Community Design Guidelines. Um, the proposed project is, uh, we, the staff determined that it was consistent with the overall theme of the Piru Community Design Guidelines. We have a detailed analysis of the 106 applicable, um, guidelines, uh, in the staff report. I believe it's section- section E of your staff report. So, um, staff determined that six of the guidelines did not apply to the project, and six of the applicable, uh, design guidelines were not, um, were not met. So which ones were not met? Uh, this chart represents, uh, the design guidelines that were not met by number, and our explanation of why they were not met. So, uh, the first one is 811, and that, it requires that trees should remain. Well, as I mentioned before, to, to, um, have the construction go on with the project, the oak, the heritage trees have to be removed from the project site. So we said that it was infeasible to build the project and retain the existing trees. But we also said that, um, you know, the, the seven coast live oak and sycamore trees would be replacing those lost trees, and additional landscaping throughout the site would be provided. So the, uh, second one is, a second story should not exceed 80% of the area of the first floor. So in order to accommodate 24 affordable units on the 1.3-acre site, the second floors of the dwellings will be 93% of the staff, uh, of this square footage of the first floor. Another one is, to reduce massing, the second story shall be set back from streets, et cetera. In order to accommodate, it's, it's basically the same response as the previous, uh, guideline. Uh, also, multifamily development should be single-story when adjacent to single-story development. So it's not feasible to satisfy this guideline based on the number of units that the applicant is proposing and the size of the lot. Also, that not, it's, uh, non-transparent walls should incorporate wall inserts and other decorative design features. Uh, the proposed walls would be covered with vines and be aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing. And this points to the, um, six-foot masonry wall on the western property line that's proposed, and the portions of the southern property line, and also, um, on the east, on the vegetative buffer side, on the western property, eastern property line. And also, where feasible, a pedestrian entrance to trash enclosures should be provided. So we explained that a separate entrance would result in loss of capacity or open space on the site. So public notification and comment. We noticed the, we provided a legal notice in the Ventura County Star for the hearing today. We mailed notices of a 300-foot radius of the project site. We, um, also, uh, provide, provided a notice to the Valley Advisory Committee and the California Fish and Wildlife. And also, the staff report and the additional exhibits were placed on the, uh, Planning Division website. So the Piru Neighborhood Council, um, because this project is in the Piru community, uh, we, it was required that this project be discussed at the Piru Neighborhood Council. So the county was, um, present at three, um, different meetings that, uh, were in regards to this project. Two in 2013 and one of November 19th of this year. So at that November 19th meeting, there were some concerns raised by the PNC. It was, uh, a, a good discussion at the, at the meeting, and there were several, you know, we heard all, the staff heard all the responses and all the concerns from the public. And some of them included, um, agricultural spraying notification, ag buffers at the eastern property line, security cameras, parking, and a blind curve line-of-sight issue. So the concerns I just mentioned, um, and the actions that, you know, the county took to address these concerns. We did meet with, uh, county staff after the PNC meeting and during this whole process for this discretionary permit. We met with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and we also met with the Public Works Transportation Department, uh, regarding the vegetative buffer and the blind curve. So, uh, quickly, the agricultural spraying notification for the Bridgeview, which is the name of the apartment's, uh, complex's residence, uh, condition of approval number 71, uh, is, is regarding this issue. And it requires that there be an onsite manager that will coordinate and provide notification to the residents of the developments when pesticide application is going to be, um, done on the adjacent property, uh, the adjacent agricultural property. And as we mentioned before, a vegetative buffer with an eight-foot, eight-foot-high chain-link fence and meshing along the eastern property line was, um, was proposed by the applicant, you know, when the project came in, in, uh, November of 2012. And also, this, um, vegetative buffer was, um, actually a recommendation of APAC, which is the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, when this project was, um, reviewed by them as well. The security cameras, condition of approval number 34 requires that there be a minimum of six cameras on site. And, um, prior to the installation of these cameras, the applicant has to provide us, provide the Planning Division with a site plan to show where they are. And they also need to have to work with the Piru Neighborhood Council to figure out where the location of those, uh, cameras would be. And, uh, the blind curve line-of-sight issue, the Transportation Department reviewed, uh, the concerns of the Piru Neighborhood Council, and they reviewed their conditions, um, and initial study responses. And they determined that the line of sight is adequate at the proposed driveway off of Center Street. Oh. Parking, sorry. Um, so there's, there's a lot of information here, so. There's, um, another concern was the parking. So, uh, condition of approval number 33 requires a parking management plan to be, uh, implemented and, and prepared by the applicant. And that plan includes, um, such measures as assigned parking on-site, and parking passes and the like, um, for the area residents, for the residents of the apartment complex.
Excuse me, Christina, is there any, um, provisions for visiting parking on-site?
There is not now. That's part of the parking management plan that the applicant has to prepare and would be reviewed by, um, by staff before the zoning clearance is issued.
As I saw the, the rendering, it didn't appear that there was space on-site for visitor parking. Maybe, uh, the applicant later on can address that issue.
Chair Rodriguez, um, there is, uh, the, the site is overparked per the code, so it does have an additional six spaces, um, for, that can be for either residence or visitor parking. And they could designate that specifically if they chose to. But it has six more spots, uh, there than the code requires. And since they didn't ask for, yeah, an incentive to reduce their parking, they're actually overparked per the code.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up on-
Commissioner Westner.
What about handicap parking? Um, I didn't see any mention of that. I don't know, given the multiple codes that are involved here, if we're going to have an ADA issue with-
The, the site has to meet all of the ADA requirements.
All right, so, uh, thank you.
So finally, um, we have recommended actions. They, I'm not going to read them all off here, but they, uh, we, planning staff, um, recommends that you approve the project as proposed per the recommended actions noted in section K of the Planning Commission Staff Report. So that concludes my presentation. Um, if you have any questions for staff, we'll be able to answer those questions. Um, we do have a presentation by the applicant, Caprio Economic Development Corporation. And we also have staff here from the CEO's office and the Ventura County Fire, uh, Prevent, Protection District, and also the PWA Transportation Department. Before all that, I think the county council has some comments. Thank you.
Thank you. County Council?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, as, as has been covered in the staff presentation, that, um, this type of project is, is somewhat unique and that, um, your commission's discretion is, is extremely limited. extremely limited. Staff has found that the, the project meets the county's affordable housing ordinance requirements, which are in compliance with state law. And so as we discussed earlier, the only way that your commission could deny the project is if you make one of the specific findings that's set forth in the government code 65589.5. And so staff, whenever those before, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. But again, I just want to reiterate how limited your discretion is in this matter.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Westen.
County Council, just as we progress, I'll give you a few minutes to discuss it. Condition 32 has to do with the Affordable Housing Agreement Equity Share Agreement. I'm going to have some questions regarding that as the project should move forward. You know, what happens is the county be in second position as far as an equity share agreement and also the enforcement of the low-income housing for the qualification. So it's, I'm coming from the county side, what happens five, 10 years down the road? Okay, so take five or 10 minutes and give me the complete accurate answer.
I have a number of speaker cards in support of, and a number of speaker cards in opposition. But before we do that, can I have disclosures, please?
I'm very familiar with the area, having been driven by it for the last 40 years, all some other interests, so, but I have not recently visited a property nor have I investigated it in any of them yet. So other than that, I have no disclosures.
I'm also familiar with the project and, or the, the property. I drive it, buy it probably once a week. I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by Mr. Cohen, who's sitting here today. He wanted to discuss the project with me. I informed him that I thought it best that he save his presentation for the full commission and we exchanged pleasantries and didn't discuss the substance of the application.
Commissioner Maggie.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Dugas.
I have no disclosures.
I also am familiar with the area. It's been a while since I've driven by it, but I've, in the past, I found myself spending numerous hours in Moore Park, or excuse me, in Pyru. Unique community. Moore Park's a different community, sorry. And I have not been there in the last six months.
Okay, I have a number of speaker cards.
I'm sorry, who's making the application for the applicant? And then I'll proceed in order. If you would step forward, please, I assume I have a card for you.
Yes, my name is Miguel Garcia. I'm with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. So, do I just use this clicker? Maybe I don't know how to use it. Okay, thank you. So once again, my name is Miguel Garcia. I'm with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. I am the project manager for the Bridgeview Apartments that is in front of you today. Cabrillo Economic Development, we've had 30 years, we have over 30 years of experience in building affordable housing. We do a lot of rentals and, and for-sale homes. Also, over the past 30 years, we've had over 1,700 homes built and over, around 275 homes that we have currently in our pipeline. Over 1,000 rental homes and we have about 25 properties that we own and manage. We are a 501(c)(3), we're a nonprofit. We serve the very, the low-income population of Ventura County and Santa Barbara Counties. And some of these, some of these populations include individuals, families, seniors, farm workers, and special needs populations. So for us, the importance of affordable housing, it provides a safe and decent place for families to live. It also relieves monthly economic strain for families and the occupancy standards allow for less overcrowding, more personal space. It's something that, for me, I was, I grew up in Oxnard and I was part of substandard housing. I was living in a two-car garage with about eight people. So noticing that big difference for families when they move into an apartment where they have their own room, the kids can study, close the door, they have privacy. That's kind of the big, well, some of the big impacts that, that we have with affordable housing. So this is a list of properties that Cabrillo has built over the last 30 years. We're practically in every city in, in the Ventura County with the exception of Thousand Oaks, but we have Simi Valley, Camarillo, Oxnard, Ventura, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and our most recently, Pyru. And Doha, of course. So right now, currently, we have two projects that are about, are, one is in construction in Simi, that's in Ventura, and that's the Snapdragon Apartments. That's a total of 50 units, I believe. And 25 of those are in construction right now. The Phase 2 will, we're, we're getting ready to start Phase 2.
Where are they located?
They are located in Saticoy, practically across the street from, excuse me, from the golf course. I don't have the correct address, but it's on Snapdragon.
Thank you.
And yeah, the construction's going right now. We're, we're scheduled to start, in construction in spring of 2015.
Thank you.
The next project that we also have coming up, it's in Simi Valley. It's a senior project and it's also located off of Catherine Road South in Simi Valley. And that's a total of 42 units. So these are an example of products that we've built. We're very proud of what we build. The unique thing about Cabrillo is that we own and manage them. So very different from many other developers is that we make sure that our properties stay nice. So I believe this was built in 2005 and this is Plaza del Sol. It's a 70-unit complex in Simi Valley. This is Paseo Santa Clara. It's 140 units in the city of Oxnard. And this is one of our most recent ones. This was built in 2012. This is in Santa Paula. It's 90 homes, they're called the Rodney Fernandez Gardens in Santa Paula. And that's another view. Oh, sorry, clicked too fast. But this is also the community room. We do a lot of emphasis on community, the community approach. We want, you know, our residents to come in, enjoy classes, do ESL classes. We have a computer lab in a lot of our projects. And we also open the community room to the residents of whichever city we normally build in. So in this case, we're going to open our community rooms to the residents of Pyru. And this is Azahar Place. This is also in Ventura. And this is another cool feature that we like to do. It's called the community garden. So a lot of the families come in, they tend the community garden, is more of a resident getting to knowing each other and building community from there and enjoying where they live. So this is our most recent project in Pyru. It's a 66 apartment home called Wayanatan Hall. It's, it's designated for farmworkers only. And we started recently the food share program there and it's enjoyed by practically the entire community of Pyru. There's also site amenities that include a soccer field, which is open to the Pyru Youth League sports. And they come, they, I believe they started using it, or they will start to use it soon. We also have a community room that offers Zumba classes, after-school programs, ESL classes, and a computer lab. The other good thing is this project was able to provide a one full-time employment opportunity to a Pyru resident, and that's our, our maintenance person. So in front of you, this is our Bridgeview Apartments. They're 24 affordable housing, housing for all low-income levels. And they're specifically, they're not specific to a population, so they're not for farmworkers. They're practically open for everybody that is considered low-income in the community of Pyru.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Just to follow up on your statement fact, then you won't be giving a specific priority to the farmworkers opposed to anybody else, as long as they meet the economic.
Correct. That is correct. It's open to everybody.
Thank you.
That meets the AMI threshold, the Area Median Income threshold. And I will go through the AreaMeaning Income threshold in a sec, so.
Open to everybody as in county residents or open to everybody?
It will be open to everybody.
Or Pyru owners.
That applies for the project that wants to come in.
How would you advertise the availability?
We have our.
Once it's ready.
Property Management Director here, so she will be able to.
They can, they can let us know later.
Yeah, definitely. So once again, this is a project site. I wanted to make sure, you guys got to get aerial view of it. So it doesn't encompass that other sliver that Commissioner Noria Adukas was mentioning. Sorry. And so the site is 1.3 acres. It's a vacant lot. It has single-family use to the west and south of it. There are also commercial uses. There's a sheriff's station across the street and there is a clinic across the street. They're in a bungalow style. There's also the agricultural to the east, the orchard, and, but it's, that's owned for residential. So our project is consistent with the following. It's consistent with the residential Pyru Area Plan and Land Use Designation of residential 10 to 15 dwelling units to the acre. And it's also consistent with the zoning designation of residential plan development of 12 dwelling units to the acre.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Did you say there was a sheriff's station across the street?
There is a part, I believe it's a part-time sheriff's, sheriff's station across.
Where's it located?
It's, actually from this picture, you can actually see it if you, this is a site photo facing north from the south point of our property.
Is it in Waring, is it in Waring Park?
No, 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 no. It's directly across Center Street. Let me see if I can. It's a substation. If you can see the bungalow to the north of our project, that's, that's the sheriff's substation.
Yeah, point it out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, gotcha. There it is.
Hmm, okay. What else is in that building?
There's also, I believe, the Clinica, or there's a, a Pyru community clinic, right?
Right, public health.
Public, it's a public health.
I see, okay.
So this is the current site photo. It's facing north from south of the property. This is actually taken from the other side, from the bungalows facing south. And this was the previous, previous pictures of the, of the project. So when we acquired the project, it originally had an existing dwelling unit with a, some sort of a shed. And it was a community nuisance, so we were able to demolish it and get rid of it. So the history of the site, we acquired the site in January of 2008. Due to market conditions, we were unable to move forward with what our original plan was, was to develop 16 for-sale homes in 2008. We all know what happened during the market crash of 2008, so there was a lot of issues with housing, for-sale housing at that time. Then looking at different options, we, since 2008 up until 2012, we tried looking at different scenarios on how we can make this project work. And considering also the need in Pyru and sticking to our mission, we proposed the development of 24 units to the acre. Of 24, I'm sorry, of 24 units in Bridgeview Apartments. In 2012, we completed the demolition of, you saw the pictures before. And then our current application was proposed in 2012. So our objectives for this project is to enhance the existing neighborhood. We would like to clean up the site and do some remote trash removal. Also want to create, create rental opportunities or housing opportunities to the different demographics of Pyru, different populations of Pyru. And all, and along with that, we want to provide a vegetative buffer with additional netting on the fence on the east side of the project. So our proposal includes a total of 20, the 24 apartment homes include six one-bedrooms, six two-bedrooms, and 12 three-bedroom apartments. We meet, I just want to reiterate again that we meet all zoning requirements with the inclusion of bonus density. And along with our proposal, we're doing a community room that's over 1,300 square feet. And we are asking for three design incentives that are also allowed in the state density bonus. So we've met with the Pyru Neighborhood Council several times throughout the longevity of this project. And we had an initial design review in 2012. We went back in November of 2012 just to get comments and what their concerns were. In January of 2013, we granted an extension to the Pyru Neighborhood Council so they can review the project some more. And then practically in September 9, 2013, we incorporated all their comments. We incorporated the new facade. The architect's going to talk a little more about that. And the colors per their concerns. And in November 19th, the Planning Department requested us to go and re-meet with them again prior to us coming to you. And we showed them the picture again. But I just want to make a note that the project has not changed since the September 2013 meeting. It's still the same project. The facade remains the same. The unit size remains the same. So some of the comments that we received were the design, obviously. So we incorporated a lot of the design changes. The density was a main issue with the Neighborhood Council. And we listened and we're allowed to build up to 31 units, but we feel 324 is, is reasonable. We can make the project work at that point. Parking, we were overparked. We, there was a concern about parking. We exceed parking by six parking spaces onsite. We're, we're not required to park offsite. And public safety, circulation, our project's now designed, we met with the county and everything, it's assigned to meet the county standards. And we'll also meet the conditions required by the appropriate reviewing agencies. So I'm going to pass it on to my architect, Gio Aliano, and he's going to give you a little more of the design and I will be back.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Planning and Zoning members. My name is Gio Aliano, Vice President, Director of Architecture for the Boe Communities, the architects for this project. Today I have here with me Rene Rodriguez, sitting behind me, who is the project manager and project designer for this project. Both he and I will be available after the presentation to answer any questions you may Boe Community is a multidisciplinary organization. We have an architecture studio which has been designing affordable housing and community-based architecture for over 45 years. We are a nonprofit organization and we pride in the fact that we engage the community in everything that we do. In fact, all of our projects have that component and we take a lot of pride in that. Bridgeview Apartments has been designed with that in mind, the same approach. We believe it will be a very exciting place to live. It will be, it will be a very pleasant and aesthetically pleasing place to live. It addresses the needs and desires of the community while providing very much-needed affordable housing for the area. I think all of you are familiar with the site. Let's see if I can get this right. Maybe I'll use my little pointer here. So previous slide, you can see this is the general area and then you can see the site right here. right here. And here's a close-up of the site with some images of the train station, which actually we use for inspiration in designing our building. The site is right here, with center, street here, market and orchard right there, and then the orchard right to the east. We focus our attention during the design process in the Piru Community Design Guidelines, because we felt those are fundamental, they reflect the spirit of the community. We focus on those guidelines in terms of massing, elevational studies that represent materials. We focus our attention in terms of texture and color, in terms of planning, in terms of parking, how to approach parking, how to plan parking, and also in terms of landscaping to create the necessary buffer zones that are required in projects of this nature. As you can see in the next slide, this is taken right out of the guidelines from Piru Community. And you can clearly see some of the examples that are cited, such as this one below, where you can see that there's varying roof lines, the second story is set back, there's direct view to the street, there's the entry primarily from the street, and also providing different materials and colors. Those are the things that are encouraged in the guidelines, which we believe we addressed, which you'll see in a minute. From the get-go, this is a sketch that was done originally, just as a way to start thinking in how to plan the site. And you can clearly see that in this sketch, here's, actually, this sketch is superimposed on the site plan, which you see right here. Here's our center, the bridge is over here, orchard is there, and Market Street is right here. And then here's the orchard area. So you can see in this sketch that we initially were always thinking in terms of creating a complex that would have a central core, some kind of a public space that would be used by the residents and also by the community visiting the place. Creating also a very strong edge along the street to create access from the street, directly from the street, which is actually required by the guidelines of Piru. Creating another buffer zone along here to the orchard, and then creating pockets along the west and the south for parking. These pockets obviously create screening, and they create a buffer zone from the residential area with landscaping along the edges. From this concept, this is what came out of it. This is the site plan. Again, you can see, you can start relating the lines that I showed you in the earlier sketch, which has to do with the central space, with basically three buildings. This is Building A, Building B, Building C, and then Building D. All these three are clusters of apartments, eight maximum, which is a requirement by the guidelines, so we have not exceeded that. So each building is essentially the same in terms of footprint, but they're organized differently to relate to the existing site condition. There's a slight curvature or angle to these two buildings to kind of address Center Street. There's also direct frontage to Center Street, so you can actually access these units directly from the street, another requirement by the guidelines. Some of the units, like these right here, are accessed from the interior, from the interior courtyard. And then, obviously, the second-story units are accessed from the interior of the site.
Is it an exit?
Yes, of course.
I thought I heard a previous speaker state that. I thought I heard a previous speaker state that all entrances to the residences were inboard, and I hear you saying that entrances to the residents on Center Street are outboard.
Correct, that's a fundamental.
Did I misunderstand something?
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure if that was the intention to only show that, but this project has been designed to have access from the street. You'll see in a minute in the rendering that I'll show you. That was actually a major part of our design in response to the guidelines. Yeah.
But the main entrance to the residence is from the parking.
Correct, yes. So maybe that's what the planner was mentioning, was noting too, is that there's street access, there's actually doorways along this hedge from the street. But if you park here or here, you can actually go from your car to these internal areas, and you actually have patios from the back that allow you to go in. I'll show you in a minute that we have a larger plan that shows that. But yeah, that is also correct, that you do have access from the interior. This courtyard, as I mentioned earlier, is sort of the catalyst, is sort of the space that is supposed to unify the whole complex and create a place of activity. This is a rendering of that space that shows north is that way. These are the two buildings that are flanking center. This is the community center to the west. And right behind this building, this building is essentially screening the parking area for the west side, and then there's another parking area down here. But this building is the community room that just opens up into this great outdoor space. There are play structure for children, there are benches, there's lots of landscaping, places to see, places to gather, and then obviously a community center that will open up to the space for community activities. This is really the focal point of the whole complex internally, that is. Here's a larger view of the floor plans. So if you can imagine, this is the first floor and second floor. This is the typical footprint, and if you're, for example, looking at front, which will be right here in this particular example, this building actually is mirrored, is mirrored in this direction, and there's a main entrance to the middle. And then the other building that I showed you earlier is actually further down, but it's the same footprint, same idea. And here are the entrances from, this is center. So what I was talking about earlier was that each unit has an entry from the street, again, a requirement and a compliance to the guidelines. So if you want to enter the dwelling from the street, you can enter right here. If you park here, you can enter through this back area, which is basically a patio, a private patio, allows you to enter the unit from the back. On the second story, which is this plan right here, there is a central stair in each cluster. This is one cluster, this is another cluster, those two clusters make up one building, eight units, four on the ground level, four on the upper level. This stair takes you up to a second level, and you enter those units on the second level right here for this unit, and right here for this unit. This happens to be a one-bedroom, this happens to be a three-bedroom. And then we have the same thing on the other side, except that this one is a two-bedroom rather than a three-bedroom. So there's variation, and that actually helped us with the massing of the building, to be able to have footprints that allow us to create elevations and prospective views such as this one. So the plan that you just saw, this plan right here, this one with the second floor above it, is basically this building right here. So here is the second floor with a two-bedroom unit, and here, there are basically four units down below and four units up above. This is a two-story building. I think there was a question earlier about the clear-story windows. These represent clear-story windows, but they're actually vents for the attic. But it's essentially a two-story building. The main entry, so if you take this building and you mirror it to the other side, that creates the other building. And between these two buildings, that is the main entry to the complex that takes you to that courtyard that I talked about earlier. A part of the guidelines was to really create an identifiable point of entry, and we've done that by using sort of timber construction of trellis, that's the main entry. What you also see in the sketch is that, what I talked about earlier, is that each unit on the ground level has entry from the street. Here is a porch, directly facing the street, so somebody can actually sit out and be able to talk to passersby, be able to enter directly into the unit from the street. You see that here, there's another entry here, this is the main entry to the courtyard and to the internal part of the building, of the complex. Here's another porch, and there's another porch. There are basically four porches on this side, four porches on the other side. This building also, this particular view actually shows how we've articulated the elevations by creating, having different materials. For example, this is primarily plaster, but then we articulated by using other materials like cementitious boards, battening, this is called a battening board system, which are more verticals, and then we have siding, which is horizontal here, again, to create a sense of scale, a sense of character, so that the place feels comfortable and inviting. This is what we call our materials board, and basically shows the main elevation. Again, we only concentrate on one cluster, which is the building that I showed you a plan of, that's this one right here. And you can see again the four points of entries from the street, one, two, three, and four. And right here is the main entry to the complex. This is the rear view, which shows the main stair that takes you up to the second level. And as I mentioned in the earlier drawing, this is where you enter, that level is where you enter the unit on this side and the unit on the other side. There's another cluster here, again, the same idea, go up the stairs, unit on one side, unit on the other side. The materials are very simple, very elegant, they're primarily exterior plaster, different tones of beige, light browns, we're using asphalt shingles for the roof. And then the red is actually a main feature which we actually borrowed from the train station. There was a desire of the community to incorporate some of those ideas, and we use that building as an inspiration, which is why you see here some of the red trim on the fascias and the gable roofs and the shed roofs. So that was really an important part of what we've done. Here's again another view, this is center, and then you can see both of the two buildings that are on the street. The one that I showed you a plan of is right here, and then the mirror of that is right there. And here's the main entry to the complex, it takes you to the back to that courtyard that I showed you earlier. Again, porches, facing the street, lots of people being able to access the area. It's pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly. There's a driveway here that takes you to the parking in the rear signage to welcome people. So it's really, it's been really our intention to create a project that really complements what's already there architecturally. We borrowed a little bit from ranch-style architecture, but then towards the latter part of the project, we actually focused primarily on more craftsman-style details, such as, you know, trellises made out of timber right here, you know, gable roofs, they're very indicative and reminiscent of the style of craftsmen. Again, creating a place that is inviting, that is welcoming, that is an amenity to the whole community, and essentially creating a project that is really a good neighbor to the adjacent properties. So I think with that, I'm gonna, I don't know if you have anything left. Okay, thank you very much. We can take questions.
Excuse me, we have a couple of questions before you leave. Commissioner Aducas.
Hi. That roof line going up, I didn't see anything in Piru or the train station that looked anything like that. That looks very modern, very urban to me, very out of place with the architecture of Piru, as I recall. What's driving that?
Well, there's a few things. For one thing, this project has photovoltaic panels to basically allow for renewable energy. And so in order to get the most of the southern exposure, that roof needs to be pitched mostly southerly. In other words, we had a gable roof, at this part of the roof, I could pitch the other way, we would lose a lot of the efficiency, we would lose a lot of the panels. It also, it's, this type of architecture, actually, you see it a lot in the craftsman style, where there are deep overhangs, as you see here, these are at least about 24-inch, maybe in some cases more.
But they're pitched up, and that's, and that's not in keeping with the architecture of the craftsmen.
Yeah, let me show you, let's see if I have. See, those pitched roofs that you saw, this is the front elevation, but when you approach this building from the side, this is what you see. You'll see these sort of soaring forms that go up, and then the photovoltaics are actually laid out here, you can see them in the back. And then this is a view that you see if you're driving east on center. Again, you see the forms. Do you want to come up? Yeah, maybe Renee can actually add to that. This is Renee Rodriguez, associate.
Renee, you may speak, but identify yourself and fill out a speaker card before you leave.
Before you leave. Because I haven't already filled out. So I've been working on the project. Renee Rodriguez, the project manager from A Boat Communities.
Thank you.
I've been the designer for the project, I've been working on this project now for two and a half years. We actually were looking very much at the Piru area guidelines, and they very specifically said that they're not requesting a replication of our architectural, historical architectural style, that they talk about making sure that we draw from what's existing in the neighborhood. There's a code requirement about providing 30% of the area roof for photovoltaics. So the orientation of the site has to do, a lot of, the orientation of the site has to do with the fact that we're trying to maximize the roof area to get that 30% that we code require by the state of California. And the shed, and the shed structure, it is not unlike, is used in the craftsman style, it's just not primarily used. So that's one of the changes that we did. Originally, we were, we had designed this mostly as a ranch-style architecture, which was more prevalent in the area of Piru on our walk. When we got the comments from the Piru Neighborhood Council about the design not being sort of as friendly as it needed to be, what we did, we started to incorporate a lot of the craftsman elements, like the strong base, originally had porches, way more shed on the original design. We had slim columns, as it's more in line with ranch-style architecture. So we introduced heavy timber, we introduced more of the gable roofs on the front, and we had the heavy bases brought into the project.
Well, the only thing that I'm not finding successful is that flat roof that swoops up, and I'm wondering if it's possible to have a facade or something that makes it look less urban and more in keeping with the community character that exists in Piru.
Sure, I mean, there's ways to deal, maybe we can go to the other elevation, but there's ways to deal with.
How do you go back, sorry?
I think you turned it off. Okay. Go back one more, one more.
No, I want to show something, moment. The shed roof here in the corner, that actually, that picture is taken from the Piru area guidelines. When they talk about multifamily properties and the type of project that we're doing high-density, they actually talk, you know, that, that, two sheds, where's the, so there's a shed going that way and a shed going that way. It is sort of highlighted as one of the desired architectural elements for the high-density multifamily residential requirements from the Piru area guidelines. These two images are taken directly from the booklet. The Piru area guidelines came out of the process in 2006, introducing SmartWorth Initiative for the expansion of Piru, and this is very much in line with that combination of SmartWorth Initiative. And we believe that we sort of are incorporating some of the other elements in the neighborhood. But the shed, the shed roof is, this image, like I said, is specifically from the desired elements from the Piru guidelines handbook.
If I may also address the same question.
It's just my observation.
Yeah.
And it's just a single opinion that, that what you had shown just two seconds ago, if you go back to it.
Yeah, so your concern, yeah, please.
It's my observation that that roof line is the primary architectural feature of this, rather than it being a relatively minor one in the ones that come from the booklets. And it's just, it's a very, it's a very intense use, it's, and I understand it needs to be, but in order for it to dovetail in with what exists in Piru, I think maybe it could be more successful if it didn't have that very strong urban feel with that roof line.
Yeah, I was thinking, if I may, I think it was.
Just an observation, just an opinion.
Before you go, also, we are at 32, 30, close to 33 feet on height at the edge of that. If we were to put a parabed at the end, we actually would be exceeding our height, which is another sort of the reason for staying in line with a sort of broken shed sort of roof line. I understand what you're saying, and it was very intentional to maximize the roof space for solar, attain solar, and then also keeping in line with the sort of zoning requirements and the neighborhood guidelines.
Yeah, thank you. I think what I'm hearing is that, and your concern is really primarily about this form and how it's so stated. And I think as we develop the project, there are ways to address this area so that it becomes a little bit softer. Maybe the best way to look at that is on the elevation. In other words, you can see here how we've used battening board material, which is cementitious boards, in the vertical direction, we're also using siding at the lower end. There are ways to be able to make that a little bit softer, mainly we could perhaps introduce a line there that creates more of a clear-story feeling, as you mentioned earlier.
One of the things that, one of the comments, and I don't know if you've seen it, is that Piru relies on some filming.
Yes.
That makes it look like a small town of a certain period. And this would stick out like a sore thumb, in my opinion.
Okay, well, I think we will consider that. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, on that same slide you have up there, the upper right-hand corner, we're talking about two-story housing, right?
Yes.
So that corner, upper right-hand corner slide, I think I heard it called attic area?
Yes, the attic will be right about here, this area.
Aside from the obvious insulation, what else is in that space that requires that type of elevation?
Well, it has to do with the inclination of the roof, really, because of the photovoltaic panels. panels. I think once you reduce the slope of that roof, then the photovoltaic panels are not going to be as effective. And so that's what drives that. But again, we could articulate this in such a way, well, it becomes softer where it does read more of a clear story. Maybe these openings can be a little bit larger.
So the efficiencies, the site construction, the benefits here is of the efficiencies are the developer or the property owners through reduced electrical?
Well, it's a, it's a state law. Basically, we, you know, to be able to provide renewable energy. And, and so we're doing that by providing a roof surface that will give us the opportunity to put photovoltaic panels so that it can generate its own energy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hang on a second. Sir?
Commissioner, excuse me.
I have another question.
Yes.
I was reading about the solar panels and so forth. Then there was, then there was mention heat. And then it didn't really go anywhere from there. And so I'm assuming that that means the double pane low E type windows that you're putting in reduces heat from coming inside. Is that what the heat reference is?
I'm not sure where that reference came from. I think you might, I didn't hear the first part of your question about heat.
Well, you have double pane windows, there's a low E type.
Or the glass, right?
Okay, and that, that prevents, reduces the amount of heat that comes into the building, correct?
Yeah.
And, because heat was mentioned with this, in the solar area for some reason, and it didn't seem to connect anything. So I'm assuming that's, that's what that is. Is this the solar panels and the, the low E double pane windows, those are your, your energy related?
Well, the solar panels are really mainly for renewable energy. I think in terms of the windows, keep in mind that these are all north facing windows. So there'll be very little heat gain on those windows. Maybe Renee can actually come in.
Sorry, the, we do have double insulated windows. We have blown insulation, two by six walls on the, on the perimeter. The, the actual roof shingle that we're using, it is actually a solar reflectance index of 29 or higher. It's a new product that Certainty has. We do, we do have two types of solar panels, which has to do with the break in the roof as well. We do have for solar thermal and for solar electric. So this building originally designed was to offset 70% of the total energy use from the project. So it's, it's significant, the, the energy efficiency features we have. Plus, low, you know, water sense label fixtures. Obviously, we're in entitlements, all of that stuff. But in the entitlement package, the water fixtures have been shown that we're using. We're using LED lighting for all exterior lighting as well. So we're really looking at, almost getting to net zero on the, on this building.
So solar, solar thermal, I assumed, and it's hot water?
Hot water, yeah.
Okay, that's what it was. All right.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yes, we have another question. Commissioner Onstott.
Could you put up the site plan again? I want to speak specifically to that eastern boundary, the buffer. Could you explain to me from north to south there, what is involved in what you're calling the buffer?
Sure. So north is up, this is center. The three buildings, one, two, three, with the community center. So we're creating buffer zones.
Well, I'm concerned specifically with the eastern boundary.
Yes. So the eastern boundary will be right here. This actually doesn't show, there's a detail that we have that shows how we dealt with this buffer zone. This is a landscape buffer zone to the orchard. It's a six foot fence, I'm sorry, eight foot fence with landscape, with a landscape edge. And that was mitigated as part of the mitigation with the, with the agricultural policy committee. So, so that's what we, when we talk about buffer, that's what we're talking about. There's also a buffer zone here, here and here, because these are residential. And there's landscaping, landscaping.
I understand, sir, but for right now, I'm just focusing on the eastern boundary.
On the east one, so that's the buffer zone.
Next to the agriculture. The fence you're talking about is a chain link fence?
Chain link.
Okay.
In the, in the design, when we talked with APAC, sorry, we did talk to APAC, we had proposed originally a two-layer plant buffer and a certain distance from the building. Part of the, of the sort of development of the design, actually, we have an eight-foot chain link fence, which is required. We're putting a mesh on it to keep some of the, of the particulates coming, coming out. We also have six, we have tall trees, a combination of tall trees and shrubs to make sure that we're keeping any sort of the pesticides that are being used, you know, whatever we can keep to the property, as well as a, the design changed significantly for this one. Actually, the entrances are all to the, you know, there's no entrance from that side. And all sort of mechanical equipment. So all the intake and outtake that's coming to the building is actually coming from the front of the building. Nothing is coming from the back.
Could you say that again? There's no entrance? I see, I see there's definitely entrances on those, on the lower, on the lower building.
Sorry. There's only, there will be porches, but if you see the size of these porches compared to, so, I mean, somebody could go out of their back door. But the, the entrance is from here and there's no, the, the porches that we created here, which is the back of the building, this is technically the back of the building, the porches that were created here are not here, are not existing. So we eliminated all porches, all sort of shaded areas. We just have a nice little brow. So there's a back door and they could go out there. There's, like I said, a combination of tall trees and shrubs along the line and the chain link, which is the required sort of material with, with a mesh on it. And like I said, all sort of ducts are going to be faced to the front of the property. So there won't be any intakes. Of course, a window can be open, a door can be open, but the actual mechanical systems, none of it is, will be sort of facing that area.
Is there a specific landscape plan for that boundary? Have you, you have one? Has that been adopted?
Commissioner Onstott, this project did go before APAC with a specific landscape plan. And APAC did recommend, and it was incorporated into the project, that they include a mesh on their fence. And they voted to approve it as it is. But there is a specific, there is a specific landscape plan. The issue here about the buffer, right, because the, the APAC typically, when you go there, they put some sort of a buffer on and it's typically 150 feet or less. But that policy doesn't apply here simply because the, the land adjacent to it is not, even though it's planted in agriculture, it's not zoned AE or OS what that, what that guideline applies to. So they went there in advance of even submitting this to get the guidance from APAC about how they could best go about incorporating some vegetative and some fencing and some meshing, understanding that they wouldn't be able to meet a 75 foot buffer because the policy didn't apply. So that's, that's the distinction here, is the distinction I read in the letters from the farmworker housing project down the road that did have a vegetative buffer that did go through APAC because the portion of the land, and it's the same property owner, Rancho Camulus, it's the same property owner there, because the property that it abuts is open space. So therefore, the policy applies. So I think what happened is APAC and the CDC did the best job that they could, coming into an agreement, understanding that not only this property is zoned residential, but several properties underneath, which I think that you can see in the area plan, that are vacant properties, will eventually all be developed. They're residential, adjacent to residential, even though it is planted in agriculture right now. So there's a lot of sensitivity to that agricultural use. And, and the deputy ag commissioner Rudy Martell is here. If you have any specific questions about, you know, pesticide drift or how that happens, or why this is less than 150 feet. But there was a lot of attention paid to that particular property. And, and we do have a landscape plan that addresses APAC's concerns.
I'm not through. Why did we trade away the solid fence?
I don't believe it was a solid fence on that boundary.
Yes, it was.
I thought, oh, it was a solid fence on that boundary?
Well, it was supposed to be, I believe. Wasn't that one of the incentive requests?
That actually was a requirement from the APAC. They, they need the, the chain link fence. Chain link fence is what's approved by the requirements and for the buffer. So it was actually a recommendation from them. We, we actually were proposing something different, something that I want to address. Sorry. Also, part of the process, and I, it was one of the, what's the word for the, the request, the incentives, that we actually are keeping, we're calling out for the CMU wall in these areas.
No, I understand that. I'm, I'm not concerned at this point about that. I'm still talking about the eastern boundary. Was that not initially going to be a masonry wall?
Actually, the, the APAC said they cannot have a masonry wall. I mean, we would rather have a masonry wall. But they, because of, I, I don't, I'm not a farmer.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but this, this is not ringing. Can you enlighten us here? Was that, or was that not initially a requirement?
I don't know.
Well, somewhere in these documents, I read an eight foot masonry wall was traded as an incentive to, to a.
No, no, not on this location.
Not on the eastern boundary?
No, no, that eastern boundary was never a CMU wall.
Okay, all right.
And what I'm also clarifying is that one of the incentives that, that was pointed out, what was revised as part of a redesign process, and we are actually have a CMU wall in these areas. Where we don't have the CMU wall is here. And it has to do specifically with the negotiations with the, with the APAC. We would much rather have.
It makes absolutely no sense to me to justify not having some sort of barrier there because that property of Camulus is zoned for residential when its use is ag, has been ag, and will continue to be ag until they decide to do something different. And if they do something different, most probably that ag will come out and they would have to go to road crops, which means they would even spray more. So I really don't get it.
The, the requirements from the agricultural.
I understand, sir, I understand what you're saying.
I agree with you. But it was, it was exactly, we, we had proposed actually a barrier because one of the requirements for that buffer was to be a chain link fence. We proposed something with wood slats to at least have it be less permeable. And they said, no, it has to be chain link. So that's, it was part of the negotiation.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, me neither.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I view that as a health and safety matter, and I don't understand for one minute. Well, that's fine. We'll have them come up too. I don't understand for one minute, we're going to put high density urban next to ag with no buffer zone. We talk buffer as if there's a zone there. It's not. It's a fence with some landscaping. And I understand what the applicant is saying. I appreciate that. I'm not finding fault with them. I guess I'm finding fault with the situation that there is no buffer there and these people are going to be actively spraying. It's not a good situation. The prevailing wind in the morning is out of the east and we get, you know, yeah, it's a drift. I'm not talking about east winds, but it just makes absolutely no sense to me.
Commissioner Onstott, I believe that the staff from the agricultural commissioner's office can appropriately address your questions.
Okay, let's talk to them. Thank you. Not right now, sir. Well, wait a minute. I will get to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're almost there. Just one more thing I wanted to add about the solar panels. Besides being state code, the new code that we need to offset a lot of our energy uses, this also passes along to the tenants, the future tenants that are going to be living there. It's a big benefit to them to have a lower energy bill, especially with energy costs. We don't know where they're going to be heading in the future. It's a good way to offset their bills.
Can you really offset 70%?
We're trying.
I mean, it's in the realm of possibility.
Yes. Actually, this project will be rated, Greenpoint rated or better. We still have yet to determine what classification of green building we're going to be doing. And it's part of our tax credit requirements that we get into a green program.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. Okay. So, once again, I just want to reiterate a little bit, the project amenities. And I think I wanted to clarify something. The community room is open to the community. As far as the totlot barbecue areas and the community gardens, those are more resident services. We're not saying we're going to deny. If someone wants to come in and plant something, I don't think we will say no. But those are more resident, geared towards our residents. The other thing we're adding is energy star rated appliances. We have the washer and dryers and everything to offset energy usage. There will be an onsite resident manager who's going to keep control of the project. And we do have a lot of, in the community room, we will offer, once again, a lot of classes, workshops and services offered to the larger community. And I think I spoke again, using, being a Greenpoint rated project or better. So I'm going to get into the property management. How do we manage our projects? How do we run with them? We, one of the big issues that came out was security. So we, as Cabrera, as a nonprofit development corporation, we, we really view security as one of our main priorities. So for us, we collaborate actively with the local police department to just make sure that they understand our project, they know where the entrances, exits are, and they also iterate with the future residents of the project. We will install security cameras throughout the project. And we also do passive security. So a lot of the, whenever we design projects, a lot of the, when people are washing their dishes, they're looking, they can clearly look out at the open areas, so the totlot or the basketball courts. That's another thing that we like to incorporate. And we also engage all the neighborhood, all the neighbors by creating a monthly resident meeting. If there are any issues, we'll definitely bring them up there. And it's very well participated in our previous projects. Our property management policies, we have to, obviously, all the units will be leased. There will be a formal lease. They, we have strict rules and regulations, which I will go in shortly. And all these are smoke-free buildings as part of our healthy living. Application process, the entire application must be fully complete. We don't take non-completed applications. Every adult must sign the application. So every adult 18 years or older must sign the application. And if the application is accepted, there must be, the, every adult must be interviewed and we do a background security check or background check on them. So that involves a credit report and a criminal background check. So we do check for income eligibility, make sure that they do make enough, or make the income requirements to be able to live in our projects. We do check their credit history, rental history. We do a criminal background check for the previous five years. And we do have occupancy standards. This is another main one that we, that we strongly believe in. And I will get into that in the next slide. And we also look at the rent to income ratio. A lease is not offered if they've had an eviction in the last five years, there's use of illegal substances on our project, and they're registered, also there, if they're registered sex offender or if they have a history, a criminal history.
Stop, stop. As property manager, proposed property management, these are the protocols you, you have in place right now?
Correct.
Including the just completed project up the street?
Yes.
Okay. Post occupancy, how do you maintain that standard? How do you, do you have any sort of annual or biannual semi inspection to make sure that you don't have more adults in the, in the unit? Do you, you talk about illegal substance abuse and sex offender, for example?
Correct.
How often do you check that, obviously, that obvious issue? Is that something that's just done when, when occupancy occurs?
Correct.
Or is that done every three years, every five years?
So what, when we develop these projects, we have different funding sources. A lot of these funding sources require income eligibility recertifications. And then I have my property management director here, so she can attest to more of how, how often we go into the units. And so in many of our cases, we do check, we have yearly inspections, if not sooner. And we make sure that they recertify each year so that we know who, how many people are living inside the unit.
What is the occupancy rate of the residences you anticipate here?
Sure. So the occupancy standards, and these are standards set by, by us, and they're also set by, I believe, different programs. For a size of one bedroom, you're allowed to only occupy it up to two people. Two bedroom, between two to four, and three bedroom, three to six people. So normally what it goes is, it's, the rule of thumb is two bedroom per, per person. Two person per bedroom, sorry. And we have the yearly certification when we go back and then we inspect the unit. And we also ask them for, them to resubmit all their paperwork so that we can re-income certify them.
Do you ever physically inspect the residences once occupancy has occurred?
Yes. Every year. We have yearly inspections, yeah.
Okay.
Biannual. I'm sorry. So we check twice a year.
I mean, we saw a lot of slides up there about, you know, the adjacent or nearby property that you're, that you're managing. And the slides I assume were current as opposed property that you're, that you're managing, and the slides I assume were current as opposed to three years ago, or four years ago, whenever it was that occupancy occurred. One other question. What is the planned vehicle-per-residence ratio that was built into this, into this development?
So practically what we did is, we did a, we're going to do a parking management plan. We're working with the county of this for the, for the, as part of a condition. But for this case, we looked at the required county parking, and we exceeded it by six parking spaces. When the families move in, which their future families, and we don't know who will be moving in, we'll be looking at how many cars they have and what are their needs. I mean, some families will maybe just have one car, and they might only just need one parking space. So when that comes on board, we'll be looking at a management plan that's going to...
Or have three cars.
Or have three cars, right. So normally, with our projects, we've gone into giving two parking spaces per unit, and some families don't use that, don't use two parking spaces, they only use one. In this case, because it's a community concern, what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be assigning parking spaces based on need. So based on what we have as far as the county guidelines, we're overparked by six spots. And then once the families move in, we'll recognize how many cars they have, and we'll be assigning parking spaces based on that need.
And so they, so the family with three cars and two parking spots, what do they do with that other car?
Exactly. So it really depends on once the families move in, but if that's the case, then if there's a family who only has one car, instead of giving them two, we can give that extra spot to the family that has three cars.
And where would visitors park?
So, that, once again...
I understand what you're saying. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we're talking about six additional parking spots beyond the minimum required by the county. And I just, you know, it's a real stretch for me to visualize, so you need to convince In essence, those people have to park on the street?
So, from what I understand, we're not required, we're not asking to park on the street. Actually, part of the street's going to be redlined. We feel we have more than enough ample parking space to park everybody onsite.
Okay. There is a staff report, and some of the communication we got from, from interested parties indicate that the other party, the other property, Vienna and Nigal...
Vienna and Nigal.
That same protocol was put in place and represented and accepted, but now there is a real issue with parking, and you've talked about, you've gone to permitted parking, but that issue still exists. So I, it seems to me that we're going to have a similar impact on this site as we have, you know, a couple hundred yards down the road.
Right. So practically at Vienna and Nigal, if I may go into that project for a little bit, there are, residents are parking in front of their homes that are on Center Street. And it's easier for them to get off their car and walk straight up to their, to their units as opposed to parking on, where they have their assigned space. So what's going on there is, there's not an over, we don't have an overpark situation. What we have there is that people are just parking on the streets and having access to their units. In Bridgeview, we're not going to have that because most of the project is going to be redlined on the front of the street, so people will not be able to park in the front of the street.
Seems to me that just magnifies the parking problem. Am I wrong?
I, I don't believe so. I mean, with us, we feel we're very comfortable with what we have as far as assigned parking. We meet the requirement. We have an extra six spots. We feel we're going to have more than enough ample parking onsite, and we're not going to be required, we don't require for any off-street, or off-project parking. So moving back, grounds for termination, if they violate one or more violations on their lease, we, we may terminate their, their lease. Non-payment of rent and other financial obligations, the use or possession of an illegal controlled substance is another grounds for termination. Repeated violations of the lease or domestic violence will also terminate their lease. So now getting into the income levels. The median family income in Piru, and it's based on the county, I believe it was, said it was based on state guidelines, but the state sends the guidelines based on county. So every county has different income qualification. So the median family income is $44,808. This is for a family of four. The maximum income for families served at our project in Bridgeview, it's going to range from one person to six people, and it goes from $18,600 to $51,540. So the current range at our project developments would be between $425 to $1,037 for a three-bedroom.
Mr. Chair, sorry to commission a question. These are questions that come up. You say, "These are the maximums that are permitted by the state guidelines?"
Correct.
Okay.
Well, these are the median incomes.
Right.
It's 50%.
Where I'm going with this is, you can have a maximum, but also have an impact on the median community, where, let's just say, the one-bedroom in the median community is $375. And if you're able to charge these rents, that impacts the local community. Do you understand where I'm kind of coming with this? As opposed to, this is the maximum rent I can get as a landlord, and you wind up impacting the people down the street. So that's what the maximum you can do? Is there a philosophy of trying to help those, you know, because again, that's the purpose of this, is to low-income housing, to help people?
Right.
Is that going to be taken consideration as my question?
Yes. These rents are below market, correct? So whatever the market rents are, I'm going to show you on the next slide.
Alright.
This is a comparison of what we normally do, but the market rents for a two-bedroom is $1,100 in Piru.
In Piru.
Yes. And the affordable rent for us is going to be $888. So when you have a family, based on the area median income, their monthly, their monthly gross income is $3,685. If they rent from us, they're going to have a saving of $212 a month. And this is for safe, decent, brand-new housing too. So that's another thing that, you know, if someone lives in substandard housing, and they're paying, they're paying $1,000 to live in a garage with six, or three other families, this is going to be a much better deal for them to have their own two-bedroom home.
So now, your plan is to have a sensitivity to the local market?
Absolutely.
Not to overinflate it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, is that market rate for Piru, or is that market rate for Ventura County?
So, no, this is market rate for Piru. What we do, we've had, we've conducted a market study, and what they do, the market analyst goes and surveys, canvases the neighborhood and the different rental markets, and she comes up with, with these figures. So once again, they will be saving two, about 212 in this, in this scenario. Obviously, there's different scenarios. Well, they can even save more. And this extra disposable income can be saved for, can be used for other things that will benefit the community at large. So these homes will be affordable for 55 years. CDC will be part of, will be the owner, will be the property manager of the project. And we believe the project's very attractive, and it will definitely enhance the neighborhood and the community.
Okay.
And here's our requested action, to approve the planned development permit request. And if you guys have any more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. We may have some after the break. We're going to take a quick break here. Be right back. With the exception of one, with the exception of two, I've got cards from Mr. Rosa, Emilia Garcia, Mr. Alaniz, Magaña, and Cortez. I don't know, I mean, I know personally, but officially, I don't know which side of the issue your card is supposed to represent. You either agree with the recommendation, or you oppose the recommendation. So I need you to come back up and mark these cards appropriately so that we can enter them into the record. Okay. Continuing with the, with the planning commission meeting, Mr. Garcia had just left. Were there any, I think Mr. Maggie had a question. Mr. Garcia?
It was mentioned, "Smoke-free facilities."
Yes, sir.
So are there designated sites outside where folks can have a cigarette if they smoke?
If, are you asking me if we have designated sites? Do we normally have designated sites, sites, Angelica? If, if, do they have designated smoking areas on properties?
No.
No?
Yeah, go to the archer.
Okay. So the answer is that normally, we don't have designated areas on the project. They have to be 20 feet away from our buildings or our open areas within the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go just out of order briefly. I've got a couple of staff people here that I'd like to have come forward. I think we have somebody from ag here. They're going to address any questions I think we have. If you would come up, please introduce yourself and, and...
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Rudy Martel. I'm Chief Deputy Agricultural Commissioner for the county's ag commissioner's office.
Okay. And, and your offices reviewed this project and submitted their comments?
We did. We did the assessment on, on this project. Yes, I did. And we submitted the, our comments as well as a few conditions, yes.
Recommendations?
Recommendations.
Can you give us an overview of those recommendations?
Yeah, the, the recommendations were, well, AIPAC, we'll start with AIPAC. They, they recommended the chain link fence, eight-foot chain link fence with the black mesh screen, along with meeting the minimum requirement of the ag buffer policy landscape schedule. We are, the ag commissioner's office added to that, the, which is also part of the ag buffer policy, the notification and response plan, a posting of the right-to-farm ordinance, as well as, if I remember correctly, the assuring that there is a communication with the management and the neighboring ag properties.
Any other questions? Commissioner Westner?
Rudy, thank you for coming, by the way. I appreciate, certainly much appreciated. When we get multiple agencies and everybody's representing and staff, our staff always does an outstanding job, but again, it's always nice to hear from the, nothing personal, horse's mouth. Okay. Yes, because my concern is, you know, I read conditions 71 through 74, which has to do notifications and spraying and all that. Going back to number 19, which is the landscape plan, and staff is properly represented that there will be best-practice plans submitted, yada, 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 non-invasive. But I also know the sensitivity. Five years from now, somebody thinks, "I'm going to put myself a very nice lime tree out here, and it gets XYZ bug," and your world knows it only takes one, and then the problem starts. But it's not in 19, is a coordination with your department as far as the different landscaping. So do you have any recommendations on it? You just want a notification?
In regards to the type of landscaping that you just mentioned?
That would be, that would be managed on this property?
If, and I could, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone here in regards to planning or the applicant, in the, I believe they copied or implemented into their plan that they were going to follow the minimum landscaping requirement on the, from the Ventura County ag buffer policy. And that is specific in the types of plant material that is required for that vegetative screen.
Okay. So my follow-up question, and to be the end, time goes by. All of a sudden, the vines that they planted on the chain link fence don't do, or whatever, something happens to them, they forget that they're supposed to coordinate with your department or follow your department's policies. Would you like some type of stronger language, annual review, report, not to overburden something, but again, something starts, it's hard to cure it as far as the farmer?
You know, part of the ag, I always refer back to that policy, even though that this policy does not pertain to this zoned property, but the applicant should have documented a long-term maintenance plan for those, for that vegetative screen.
Okay. Alright. Again, what I'm trying to do is, is give you the tools that you need five, 10, 15, 55 years since they talked about it. And I know farmers think in that, that range, so.
Thank you.
I'm trying to ensure that, and here's the final comment. It's not going to be the last project like this, so I want to, I want to make sure that we are putting the proper safeguards for the farming community as we go through these projects, so.
Right.
Alright, so I guess the big thing is, when we get down to that, is just talk with staff, ensuring some kind of communication with the agriculture on a periodic basis. I don't know what that'll look like, but if there's anything specific that you or the commissioner feels that should be in it, please communicate with the, the planning department.
Yes, sir, definitely.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
My turn. Commissioner Anstott? As I understand it, the recommendations that came out of your entity deal with the fact that the adjacent agricultural property is zoned residential, and therefore you flipped over into a set of rules or guidelines that relate to that. Is that correct? As opposed to had that property been zoned ag, which it's the current use. Is that correct?
We, we looked at, we followed the assessment guidelines as they're provided by planning.
No, I understand what I'm saying, but it basically ignores the fact that that's in ag because it is zoned residential.
Well, no, we didn't ignore that fact at all. It's just, short of the 150, minimum of a 150-foot buffer, everything else on that, on what we would have applied to it as, as the Ventura County ag buffer policy, everything else has been applied there. We, because we, we understood the sensitivity of the ag, of the ag property and of the current applicant, and we tried to utilize everything that we could out of that, out of what authority we had in regards to the ag buffer policy.
I understood you were working with what you had.
Yes.
And there's no way you're going to get 100, or whatever, the usual ag buffer zone that we see everywhere else that is required between ag and residential. So we've got a situation where we don't have a distance buffer. It seems to me, an extraordinary amount of care should go into what you do require, what is required to protect those, those residents, those children that are going to live there from agricultural pesticides, and on the other side of the coin is, we've got a farmer who's been, or a farm that's been there forever that has the right to farm, and it just seems to me, we have an incompatible situation here the way it's dealt. I mean, I, I would be concerned if I had certainly young children in that unit that's to the, on that, along that eastern border, because I don't think what we have is going to protect anybody.
I think with the conditions that have been implemented, that those were placed there to mitigate those particular concerns.
I know, understand to mitigate.
And as well as, as well as the, the growers' operations. Yeah, any, any kind of an incident could occur, but with the growers' operations, they train their employees on a yearly basis, a very responsible ag operation, and based on that, and the communication between the grower and, and the management, based on those conditions, I think we mitigate those issues, those issues.
Did you personally, or did anyone from your office speak with Rancho Cumulus?
Our office, no.
Wouldn't it be appropriate to speak to the farmer?
In regards to...
In regards to the, what's going on there? The residential development? You're being asked to evaluate the safety of this buffer zone, and you're not going to speak to the farmer?
Well, we already, we, in regards to pesticide use, we receive his pesticide use reports on a monthly, if, whenever he uses materials. And we know the type of activity that occurs there. It's a citrus orchard, so we, in regards to having knowledge of what occurs in the citrus orchard, I believe our office has sufficient, sufficient knowledge in that type of operation.
Do you know of any other high-density residential development that's new, that's next to ag, that doesn't have a buffer zone as opposed to a fence?
Well, in regards to high-density, I, I don't know. I would have to refer to planning, but, you know, schools are being placed right in the middle of, of ag, and we're dealing with those issues also.
But you're requiring buffer zones. New developments are requiring buffer zones. Am I incorrect?
Again, yes, you are. In regards to new developments that, that, but, again, rural ag, ag-exclusive and, and open space. I was just... rural Ag, Ag-exclusive and, and open space. I was just, again, we are working with...
I understand, sir. I'm just, you're working within the guidelines that you have.
Right.
I understand, appreciate that. It just seems to me, it just lacks common sense. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We also have somebody from Fire here. I'd like to call them up at this time to address any questions or comment on any issues that they need to be commenting on. If you would introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, Commissioners, Ryan Crye, Ventura County Fire Department.
Our department's input has been incorporated into this report.
I keep forgetting the mic here. Your department's input has been incorporated into the report we all have a copy of. Is there anything else, anything else you'd like to add to that, or anything you'd like to make in the way of presentation on that information?
No, I, I believe all our concerns have been addressed, and the staff report does adequate job of addressing it, and there's no concerns we have from, from Fire's standpoint.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Westner?
Again, thank you very much for coming down. I appreciate it. I know this is very exciting to sit through, so I appreciate your time. But I have two, two fundamental questions, and this stems from too many years doing this. Is, first of all, your secondary access is off Market Street, but it doesn't show a through to Center Street. It just shows you can enter the property because of the other thing. Does that create a concern, or was that addressed as far as being able not to have the equipment trapped?
No, it's, it's, we have numerous projects throughout the jurisdictions district that has that scenario. We just built a affordable housing project in the city of Thousand Oaks that has a very similar situation. The majority of the access comes off of the main front with one of the buildings being served off of a, a secondary street, so. And it's no different than when we would have a smaller project that has just a single, you know, parking lot that comes in from a single access point. This project doesn't, in our minds, cause any concern for trapping vehicles within, within the area.
Okay. And then the, the other thing is, the fence line next to the agricultural use that's currently going on, it was demonstrated, the smaller patio areas, like in Santa San Ano's, I'm very sensitive of you with an OBA trying to get into the back. So I, does that present a problem for you or concern as far as you getting a firefighter having that smaller area along that fence line?
As long as, you know, three to four feet, typical sidewalk width, we can, we can maneuver around with ground ladders and get into the, to the secondary, or second story windows for the sleeping units and such, and make access to the first floor, too. It should be no problem.
And then use your bolt cutters to get rid of the chain link fence if you need to.
Exactly.
Okay. Alright, so make sure you got your bolt cutters on the equipment when you get there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions of Fire? I have, I have one. Two. I, I likewise had a question about access of your equipment as it relates to that back parking area and the buildings in the back of the structure. Is, I'm assuming Market Street, once it's improved to include this property, this parcel here, is presently and will continue to be sufficient with to allow you to access that area?
Well, I just was briefed on the whole widening of Market Street and some of the, the questions of to where the Traffic Division has restricted the widening to. Typically in projects when we do off-site improvements, it's property frontage. So that's what I had heard this morning, is it's gonna be basically the property frontage. So the easternmost edge of Market Street was the only portion that was gonna be widened. With regards to access down Market Street, some of the photos I've seen, and I'm not overly familiar with that portion of the county, but some of the photos I've seen that were attached to letters from the, the citizens, by allowing parking on both sides of Market Street, and, and basically narrows it down to a single lane of travel through there, obviously could create significant issues if we had a major event going in the area and you had a car stall, or an accident, or just people backing up for us to get down there. Obviously, there's, we can come down and around the south and come back up, I think it's River Street, to get to that eastern portion of Market. If, and that's depending on, you know, if the congestor, the blockage on Market was west of River Street. If it's east of River Street, basically, and it's allowed parking on both sides as it sits now, we wouldn't be able to get back there. But that, unfortunately, that, the off-site stuff on the public roads falls on, you'd have to talk to Traffic Division as to what their restrictions on limiting parking on a public street would be.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had has to do with your ability, the ability for Fire's equipment to operate on-site, specifically turning radius requirements, given the fact that there's parking. And I'm talking about coming off of Center Street, the main, the main, and egress exit. Is there sufficient turning radius there for your equipment to operate effectively?
Yeah, the, you're basically talking about where it comes down, southbound from Center Street, and then makes the turn to the east there into that dead end parking.
Correct.
Yeah, there, there's sufficient room for us to make the turn in, that the total length is just right at the threshold to where we'd require a on-site turnaround. But the layout of it as it is, it's, it would not be a major impact to us to get in there and then obviously to, to back out, to get out onto Center Street.
So it's, it's tight, but the equipment should be able to make it?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's no more restrictive than a typical commercial. It, that's our minimum standard, the 25 feet with the 40-foot outside turn radius.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay, I'll stay.
Thank you. Returning to our speaker cards, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez and Commissioners. My name is Barbara McCray Ortiz. I'm an attorney in Oxnard, and I represent Cabrillo. I'm also an affordable housing specialist and work on these projects all over the coun, all over the county and in various parts of the state. A couple issues I want to address that just, I guess the lawyer in me was screaming out when I was listening to the conversation. One is just parking on a public street. And, you know, the issue in terms of the parking at Vaynar Anhal, that the complaint, the community complaint was, we don't want people from Vaynar Anhal parking in front of their houses on a public street. And I think, at one point even the management said, "Well, let's, everybody park inside." And then I think what happened was, the neighbors from the other side of the street started parking on that side of the street. So obviously, then it's like, "Well, wait a minute, this is a public street. Anybody can park there." And I think this kinda goes to the whole issue, the underlying current we have with affordable housing. That for some reason, we treat them a little differently than we treat everybody else. And I think that, to me, that public parking on a public street is an example of that. If there's a safety issue, traffic comes in and says, "Okay, let's paint it red." And there's plenty of places. You know, I live in Oxnard. I live on a street behind the adult school, and it wasn't anything I was complaining about. The people were complaining, so they said, "When the adult school is on one side of the street, they can park on. And if you're gonna park on the other side, you have to have a permit." I mean, these are things that are worked out as issues arise. But in terms of looking at it, it's a problem because affordable housing is coming in. I think that is just the wrong way to look at things. Also, with respect to the whole question of the buffer, when you have, you know, we're talking about property rights here. And actually, affordable housing developers who own property also have property rights. The APAC guidelines are to balance property rights. Because if you don't balance property rights, then you get into taking situations. And that's why they made the rules. And as a developer, Cabrillo has to deal with all the rules, whether that's the Piru area plan, whether it's APAC, whatever it is. And this is a developer who is very conscientious about trying to work with the community, much more than a lot of other developers I represent in different cities. When it talks to parking, you know, we can say about, we meet, we're, we have more parking than the code allows. We have extremely more parking allowed than density bonus would require us. So under density bonus law, they could've shrunk it even more. Cabrillo does things to try to build communities. But at the end of the day, you wanna have people in homes. You don't wanna have more situations where you have little Miguel Garcias being, growing up in garages. And when we put more emphasis on cars than we do on people's homes, that's a situation we drive. You know, the statistics on the Piru area median and the, the rents, those were census figures in 2010 during the midst of the recession, which drove things down. Since then, you look at what's happened with rents in this county, they're off the charts. And I'm sure rents in, in Piru have skyrocketed, too, if there's been any turnover in people, because that's what's happening. You know, we brought a lot of people who were homeowners, lost their homes. They're in the rental market. They're competing with everybody else. The people with the most money are able to compete the best. But that doesn't mean that anybody else in that, in our county isn't entitled to have some homes. And that's, that's why there's affordable housing, and that's why the laws are making it tighter and tighter and tighter in terms of turning down these projects. Because we don't want people living in garages. We want people living in homes. We want people living in homes that they can afford, so they can do all the things that families do, so they can educate, get their kids educated, get them sent to college and contributing. You know, so I mean, this is, this project meets everything. And it's, when you get into a discussion of whose rights are more important, that's really the discussion we're gonna be having here. And I think as a, as a public body, the recognition has to be that somebody's rights, we all have the same rights. And when we talk about development, we've gotta talk about it the same way, whether it's affordable housing or non-affordable housing. You know, you look at market rate, market rate apartments, that's where, in River Park, all the problems with parking are in the market rate apartments. Why? The rents are so high, so you actually have multiple families living in brand-new apartments in River Park, in the market rate apartments. And that's why they complain about parking. Now, you take Paseos, the 140 units of Cabrillo's project, there isn't parking issues there, because they have their parking plan and they do their things appropriately. But I think you have to look at this in context. This is not a radical project. This is, we're talking about 24 units. This is not a big deal, but it will be a huge deal to 24 families. And 24 families who will not have to double up and triple up in order to pay the rent. That's what we're trying to deliver, a quality of life for human beings. And that's what affordable housing is about. Change is difficult for people, but you have to look at it for what it is. And when you meet the code requirements, whether you agree with them or not, whether we agree with them or not, you meet them, that's what you're supposed to do. And if you're a market rate project and you do that, you get approval. And nobody even talks about the parking. Nobody asks for a parking plan if it's a market rate development, okay? I live on a street, I have a small driveway. When people come to visit me, they park on the street. It should be any different if I'm in an apartment complex? Those are the kind of questions. It's like, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And we're setting down a series of rules for public health, and when a development abides by those rules and abides by the codes, then they should not be treated differently. Just because they make a little less money than somebody else in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my speaker cards as relates to support of the project. Oh, I do have, okay.
Yeah, I thought the property manager was gonna speak.
Magana? Was it, who?
We have, is there one of our residents, somebody on one of the white cards?
Okay, I have, are you, Angelica Magana?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there was, Maria Santa Rosa, that's a better white card as well.
There's, there's no marking on it, so I don't know what's...
Maria?
I, I have the card. It doesn't say, it doesn't say what her position is on this issue.
She's a resident at one of our projects.
Okay, Ms. Magana?
I'm the compliance specialist with Cabrillo Economic Development, and I could address any of the questions you guys might have in regards to qualifying tenants or applicants. I did, heard that there was a question of how we market this project. We usually start six months, three to six months before the project's completed to start marketing. We market at the Ventura County Star newspaper. We advertise, we submit flyers, we deliver flyers to the, either stores or anything close to the community. We send letters to anybody that we have in our waiting list. We send letters to our community contacts, which include housing authorities, the libraries, city halls, anything that we could target the least likely to apply to our communities. We send out flyers, we, we try to market, we try to advertise on the radio. So the word gets out there. And what we market for at the beginning, it's an orientation meeting, where we address the qualifications, our requirements, the unit size, what they most meet in order to be a resident, and we answer any questions that they might have. Once we do the orientation, we give them a date and time where they could turn in an application. And specifically for this property, which is in Piru, the last project we had in Piru, we did the orientation meeting at one of the community centers there in Piru. So we, we pretty much target a lot of the residents in Piru, so we could let them know that there's housing gonna be done at the city, or in Piru. We collected applications in the city of Piru. For the other projects, we, we have our applications being collected at the 702 County Square Drive, which is our corporate office, or any property that has the capacity to hold a big group of people submitting applications. But for this project, it's only 24 units, so we're probably gonna get smaller group than our other bigger properties. So the property in Piru, which is Vaynar Anhal, could sustain the collecting of the applications there, or the community center there in Piru, that if they will allow us to use that for that, for that project. So we will advertise both Fillmore, Piru, any, any city connected to that, and Ventura County Stars. So that would give the, the project information to anybody that wants to apply and qualifies for. So I could answer any questions you guys might have as far as eligibility requirements.
Questions? Commissioner Dugus.
So you're nine miles away from county line to LA. Will you advertise to LA residents?
We first target Ventura County. If, for whatever reason, we're not able to have qualifying applicants that meet the requirements, then we will advertise outside. But more likely, we're gonna get all the applicants that we need for that project.
Thank you.
So you would give priority to county residents?
Yes. If we, for whatever reason, there's not enough applicants that meet the requirements, then we will advertise and open the, the applicant pool to other.
Would that applicant pool be also give priority to Piru residents, over county residents?
Well, they, not, it's specifically not priority to, of the residents. They're being advertised there, so that if they're interested and they have the, they meet the qualifications, they are welcome to apply. Anybody that meets the qualifications or requirements is welcome to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Angelica? I'm more concerned about the post-phase. I'm very confident, very familiar with Cabrillo as far as getting people in. I'm gonna say these magic words, and I don't want anybody in the public to get nervous. This is not a Section 8 project, okay? But I, my assumption, and you know what the word assume means, is that your guidelines as far as post-renting enforcement, alright, all of a sudden, you get somebody... All of a sudden, you get somebody with a particular criminal background now, living there. What is your procedure for dealing with that matter and correcting it?
We recertify all the tenants annually, so we recertify their income annually. In their lease, there's a clause that if they're willing to add or remove a household, that was notified the office first before allowing that person to live on-site. And the process will be, we go through the same process they went at the beginning. So, if somebody's being added to the lease, they have to meet the same criteria that the original tenant met. Go through the criminal background, eviction process, credit, criminal, and if for whatever reason they don't meet their requirement, they're asked to remove that person from the, from the household.
Okay. Is there an administrative process if that person fails to do that? What I'm coming from is, yes, you have the remedy of obviously...
Perform a...
Yeah, unlawful detention.
So, we serve the appropriate notices, and if it doesn't get to the point where it's corrected, then we will go to the legal action, which will be eviction, if not, if it's not corrected.
Okay. Then my second follow-up question is, Condition 71 through 74 puts a lot of burden on you or whoever's the employee as far as notification. Is that, how is that person going to be trained as far as dealing with potential pesticides and issues like that?
Then we will have to work with the department that trains specifically for that, and then if that, it looks like that is a big issue, and then, once we have the tenants in place, we could have people representing and informing the tenants of what's really next door and letting them know what causes. The pesticides could probably affect them, and then we will have presentations if that's a concern the community's going to have. We will educate the tenants and we provide the needs or the questions that, we will have somebody there that could do the presentation and provide the information they need.
And if they have to do, leave the property for one to three days because of whatever the existing atmospheric situations, will you have a plan in place or will you talk with that with the residents ahead of time?
We will, we have, when we have properties fumigated, if that, we have to remove tenants from, from their unit, if that's the case, if it comes to a scenario that we have to do that, then we will have to look for accommodations for them if that, if it comes to that point, that we have to remove families for a certain amount of time from their unit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Angela.
One more question. Is the intended resident manager going to be a Cabrillo staff person, or is it going to be a qualified resident? How are you going to work that? How do you work that right now?
The way, when, once the property's in place, then they're going to have a process with the hiring process. We advertise in-house first. If somebody that's currently a Cabrillo staff is interested, then they will apply. If somebody outside that meets the requirements for property management applies, they go through the same process. It's an onsite resident manager, doesn't need to, they don't need to be a resident. I mean, if they, if they're applying and meet the requirements to be a resident and be a manager, they could go through the process.
Okay. I thought I read in the text that it would be a resident manager.
It's a resident manager, yeah.
And Cabrillo will provide all the appropriate necessary training?
Yeah. If there's people outside in the general public pool that meet the requirements to be a resident manager, they're welcome to apply. Sometimes, we have residents apply for that position if they meet the requirements, they're... I mean, sometimes they, they do have the requirements to be resident managers, and sometime, I mean, the corporate office decides that. But they do, we do provide the training for the resident manager. They go through all the low-income housing tax credit requirements for housing, HUD regulation, so they have all the training required, provided by Cabrillo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Mr. Finch? Yeah, I'm going to go out of order to accommodate Mr. Finch.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Finch. I own the parcel across the street from the proposed site, and I also farm in Ventura and went through the development process on 32 acres that were non-soared, in full disclosure. We worked very hard on our, what we were developing to stay within the community. It took four and a half years and numerous dollars, and while I do like the architecture of this proposed project, I do not think it stays incompatible with what's there. With, I've heard different heights of 32 and 35 feet. With that, you could get three stories within that height guideline, even if it is technically only a two-story building. Up there, 8.31 was cited for single-story, and it said it's not feasible at one point. I think you can interpret not feasible as not, as economical, and that should not be up to this, that should not be a criteria on which this is based, that if the developer can do it, go no-go, just like every other developer. There are aspects that I think might enhance the community, the community center, but it does not stay within character of, the bridge is utilized so often in movies. Pyru is one of those places that Hollywood still does go to to get that. And this flying roofline, whether it's an Atomic Ranch or an Atomic Craftsman, I don't know what the proper term for it is, it's not appropriate for Pyru. And then to staff and to the ag commissioner, while I understand that the adjoining parcel has two designations on it, one for residential and one for OS, I would question where the OS line is in relation to this property line. Is it more than 150 feet away? And if not, then from the open space portion to the 150 feet is applicable for mitigation. And every, every row is approximately, approximately 20 feet. It was one of the early ones, had that multicolored line. is approximately 20 feet, one, two, three, four, five, you're at maybe 80 to 100 feet at the north, and you're probably at 150, and I'm just guessing, the farmer is here. I am not the farmer on that. But it seems like that line should be utilized because that is, is set. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Mr. Finch?
Yes, Mr. Finch? One more question here.
Yes. And I own that R15, disclosure, across the street.
Anybody else before me, Mr. Chair? Are you sure?
Commissioner Wester.
One of the questions is the spraying issue, obviously, the requirement. There's residential at the, that picture in the lower left-hand corner. Are you required in any way to notify those people when you are fumigating or pesticide or anything like that?
Okay. So, I am not the farmer there.
You're the farmer.
I farm in plenty of places where I am either parallel, and I have a street buffer, or I back right up to something that I inherited. And depending on the chemical, the answer is yes and no.
Okay.
Most chemicals, most sprays, the answer is no. A few, yes.
Okay. But that would be an agricultural commissioner-type requirement, not a requirement of the county? As far as, for you notifying anybody?
Yeah. Oh, yes. I mean, it's the label, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's what the label calls out on, on the chemicals.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Dukas has a question.
Mr. Finch?
Mr. Finch?
Sorry.
You still got half an hour before you.
Yeah.
You own the, the property that's designated R15?
Correct.
And it's an empty lot right now?
Correct.
And what's proposed?
It had two houses on it that were not safe, and in, you know, as I sit here today, we were trying to design six to eight for-sale units or condo-type units. As I sit here today, I'm thinking, maybe I need to talk to Cabrillo and do something that goes higher, because the precedence is, is there. So, that's, but I have no plans as of today.
Okay. Thank you.
Now? Okay. Thank you.
Returning to my, my cards here. Tim Cohen. Mr. Cohen, I, I see two cards here, because you want to speak on behalf of Pyru Neighborhood Council as well. I would, I would have you do both at the same time.
Well, I'd really like to be clear between the difference of my personal and my duties as the...
That's fine. You can, you can curtail one and start the other while you're at the mic.
I'd rather, just, there's, there's some things I would say that I wouldn't say as a board member.
Okay. So, your first presentation is as...
Is as president of the Pyru Neighborhood Council.
Okay.
And I'm certainly proud to be standing here in front of you, representing the Neighborhood Council and the community. First of all, I'd like to thank Kim and Brian for coming to Pyru and staying so very late. I think we went to either 10 or 11 o'clock last, two weeks ago. And we had a couple of issues, but, but I would have to say it's the largest attended Neighborhood Council meeting in probably about 15 years.
Sure.
There are many concerns identified in our letters to the planning commission and staff, and I hope you read them, and I won't go through each one of them to save you some time, but we will reference them a little bit later. You know, Cabrillo received support from the community, from the Pyru Neighborhood Council, on the farmworker project, and that was back in 2008. And during that process, they identified that they bought this parcel, and they also identified to the community and represented to the community that this would be for-sale market rate units. Now, this was the same time that their Valle Narahal project was going in front of the planning commission. And they understood there was a concern in the community that too many low-income housing projects proposed within our small community takes away from our inventory of market rate and for-sale units. So, with this representation, the community was supportive of the farmworker project. The community is not against low-income projects. The community is not against farmworker community projects. The community is against bad projects. The community is for diversity of housing, diversity of opportunity, and diversity of residents. The lack of following the Pyru area guidelines is troubling to the residents. We were able to enforce that on the other developments in Pyru that have been approved but not built, but they adhere to the guidelines. We spent a year and a half making those guidelines. We had the help of the planning department. We had SCAG money. We had a lot of time of the community, over a year and a half, multiple meetings, charrettes, and we put together these guidelines because we understood that these were guidelines for our community, not guidelines that could be abrogated, not guidelines that were just maybe a thought, some that you could pick, some that you couldn't. This is our small community coming together to put together guidelines. The access to this property is problematic, both on Center Street and Market Street. I've, I've sent color photos to you. I have color photos here of the same exhibits. It's really important that you be able to see those. If you don't have them, I have copies as we go through. Pedestrian travel and safety is a great concern. There's not paved connectivity to the Pyru school or the Pyru trail. There's been a lack of communication by Cabrillo. They last presented at Pyru in June of 2013, according to the planning staff report, and have not been in contact with the neighborhood rancher Camulus at all. Camulus states they were not advised at the APAC hearing, and APAC has, also has additional requirements of Cabrillo that have not been fulfilled, if you would see the narrative from the APAC. Although this project meets the state standards for parking, the existing Cabrillo project has parking problems. They haven't been resolved. History is the best advance of the future. This project will be worse. It's, it's across the street from the church, and it backs up to a residential neighborhood. There is no other place for them to park, except bleeding back out into the community. This parcel of land has been vacant for over 25 years. It's not because of the market crash in 2008. It's because it's poorly situated, poorly designed, overbuilt to any type of economic capacity, and it's unsafe. Cabrillo provides a greatly neat element to our community and to this county, and for that, they should be appreciated, and they are. But just because they do great things does not, does not mean that every project should be approved. We look forward to the dialogue today and responses to the community's concerns and The letters and the issues that we brought together, design, density, all those things are important. I'm not going to speak to them, because I do understand from the presentation, there's a very limited scope of what the planning commission can do. And so, I'm going to focus on the items that address safety and the public that are allowable for you as the planning commission to deny this project. It was Government Code 65589.5. You can deny this project for specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. I also learned on the planning presentation that I believe there's a county rule to, to deny this, if it's detrimental to public interest or convenience, if I understood the slide correctly, I'm not sure about that one. So, let's, let's start with, with our safety problems. Center Street Bridge, line of sight. On Exhibit A, B, and C of our letter that was sent yesterday, you clearly see from the parking lot driveway of a street that is 10 feet below the apex of Center Street Bridge. You cannot see very well. Yes?
Did we bring that up?
No, I got to put my glasses on. This would be on the letter of just yesterday from the Pyru Neighborhood Council.
The attachments I think we got yesterday, last night.
Yeah. I have them here if you'd like them.
But ours are just absolutely...
That's why, that's why I brought them, because I thought they'd be in black and white, and you wouldn't be able to see anything. So, these are the exact same exhibits that are in... I'm starting to learn how to do this stuff. I've been in front of it a few times.
It's not on our PowerPoint presentation. Commissioner, on stop.
Do the people in the audience have access to these pictures? Here, here.
There are, I think there are online.
Give this to them.
I can give them a sec if you want.
Someone will come up, pick it up, and see what he's doing with your...
Okay, thank you. So, Exhibit A, B, and C are on Center Street, which would be the front of the proposed project. And as we've been talking about ever since 2012, excuse me, that that's a blind corner, okay? The elevation of the proposed driveway is 10 feet below the apex of Center Street Bridge. As you can see in Exhibit B and C... As you can see in exhibit B and C, there's a white truck coming, and again, this is outstanding exactly where the driveway is from the proposed project. You can see the truck in B. You can see the truck disappear partially in C, and that just so happened to happen while I was driving, while I was taking my pictures. But that is the problem. It's a blind curve. That's why this property hasn't been developed. There's no good way of getting out of it. Our question for the county is also in regard to...this was brought up to transportation, and the transportation response was based on the speed, the posted speed, and the line of sight, and the five-foot drop in elevation, which was only the property line. It was not going to the bridge. So they measured 330 feet and said everything was okay. Where this car is, is 511 feet, and it's off the property, but certainly will impact the person from the property. So our question for clarification is, please look at the 511 feet and let us know if it comports. Also, what speed was used to evaluate that answer? Because there's actually two different speeds there. It's 40 miles per hour until you get about 12 feet before the driveway. Then it's 25. And I don't know of anybody that goes from 40 to 25 like that. Okay? And if you stay in Piru any longer, it's really 50 to 40. Okay? So we need clarification on the answer from the transportation, and I believe that was C1. Yes?
Mr. Cohen, just to stop you. If on the staff presentation, page 14, gives a similar representation, so it'll probably relate to this, because I have a question as far as egress and egress on the property as far as this line of sight. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, please, thank you.
Okay.
I was hoping to be interactive.
So it'll be page 14 on the staff's presentation.
Commissioner Westner, I also want to point your commission to exhibit 13, and also to let you know that from the county transportation office, Gerald Weeks is here with us today to be able to answer your questions...or Richard Herrera. Yeah, Richard Herrera is with us today to be able to answer your questions specifically about the line of sight, which we did address with the transportation director after we did go out to the Piru Neighborhood Council and heard. So I think that this is a technical issue that's, you know, that they follow the policy on geometric designs of highway streets, and they follow the American Association of State Highway and Transportation officials, and they have a very specific way about going about that, and we've checked, and we've rechecked, and we've asked the transportation department to come here because we've heard this issue several times raised, and so I think it's a good idea if we hear from the transportation department sometime today.
And Mr. Cohen, just so you know, I'm taking this very seriously, and I think the rest of the commissioners are, because this is something that people are going to have to live with a long time if it occurs.
I appreciate it, and I love the process.
I want to get all my information.
Because it's giving us an opportunity to give you all the reasons why, in relation to safety, not designed, because obviously we don't have much control over that.
Exactly. All right.
So I appreciate that, thank you.
Were you able to get page 14 up, staff presentation? Sorry to disrupt your...
No, please do. Please do. Another question that we have along Center Street and related to that is, where, if at all, is there proposed no parking on Center Street on either side? And if it's neither, we'd like to know that, and if there is going to be restrictions on Center Street, we'd like to know that as well. That hasn't been very clear to the community as to what may or may not occur there, so I think that will certainly impact safety. As you look at exhibit B, there is parking on that side of the street, which is right in front of the police substation and the health...
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Did we not have testimony that the curb is going to be redlined?
A portion.
A portion of it?
Yeah, we did have testimony to that effect, but I think that that's...we're going to clear that up in our rebuttal, or we'll be happy to clear that up now.
Well, I'd just...clear it up now, would you be...
Okay.
If you could, please.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Anstott, in a large project, there are a few people that don't get the memo. The Piru Neighborhood Council expressed concerns about parking, especially at the end of...or the east end of the project near the base of the bridge. We opine that the Public Works Department has the authority to redline curbs under certain conditions. We met with the Transportation Division at the same time, talking about the line of sight issues, and the answer was, there was nothing to warrant redlining any curb there. They only redline curbs and prevent parking on public streets where it's been demonstrated that there's something that's impeding traffic flow. And they looked at this site, didn't see a line of sight problem, and didn't see any problem with parking in that area that would be impeding traffic. If at some point in the future, there is some problem that is identified and develops through actual operations of the site, they have the authority to go in and redline as needed, the transportation director. So the conditions that are in the project, you know, draft conditions of approval include their specific authority, acknowledge their authority to redline if some problem develops. But right now, there's no evidence that the parking along the street there, which meets all county standards, would impede traffic flow.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess our issue isn't impeding traffic flow, it's impeding someone hitting a child and blocking vision. It will not impede traffic flow, it'll just impede safety, and that's one of the areas that are within your purview. If there is unrestricted parking, I would only advise you on exhibit B and exhibit C that...there's tractor trailers that park in Piru all the time, big rigs. Imagine that picture with a big rig parked in front of it on that side of Center Street. It's even worse. This was a good day.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes?
Just to expand my recollection, looking at exhibit B...
Yes.
It's traveling eastward, correct?
That's coming off the highway.
Where does that road end up? Where does Center Street end up? As you look at the picture.
Where the truck is heading or where the truck is not heading?
Where the truck is not hitting.
Highway 126.
Okay. Goes by the other project.
So it's going by the Piru motocross?
Right.
That connection right there?
Okay. Is that a...Center Street's a thoroughfare into Piru?
Yes.
One of two primary?
There's two, Center and Main. Center and Main, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The other issue on Center Street is pavement, paved sidewalks. Okay? From...and this would go to exhibit 10 on our previous letter. And I have color copies, if you don't have those as well. But from the proposed project to the Center Street crosswalk, there's not paved surface. Okay, so there's not a paved sidewalk for kids to get to school. There's not a paved service for people to get to town. So what that will do on a rainy day that we're luckily having, kids don't want to go to school in muddy boots, they're going to cross the street where the pavement stops. Well, that happens to be right there, right where those cars are coming down. So we've seen projects conditioned in Piru with off-site improvements. If everybody wants to be treated fairly, that's great. There should be off-site improvements. There should be paved sidewalk to get to school from any new development in Piru. That's been the threshold in our guidelines. That should be the threshold for this project. Now, let's go to Market Street. And this is the one that we have trouble getting clarity, and I'm really glad the fire department's here, and I know that the sheriff has talked a little bit about this. But we're going to talk about exhibit six and exhibit eight in our first letter from the community. I have color copies if you don't. You do? Awesome? Awesome. Do you guys like some?
Yeah.
Yes, awesome.
I don't remember what was on the computer. You need to get it.
Can I give you some color if you want?
Sure, why not?
Awesome. Because you're making me feel good about going to FedEx and making these. Okay. Market Street is 30 feet wide. It's a substandard road. As the gentleman indicated from the fire department, at some point, it is the only road in and out of the rear entrance of this project. If you look at exhibit eight, which is this photo with people parking on both sides of the street, there's only 14 feet in between the parked cars. It's parked cars of the residents. They've been there forever. Okay? So there...as I read the conditions, and they're confusing, and so I'm looking for clarity, is that the applicant will only have to make its portion of the property 35 feet wide, but the rest of the street stays 30. And if that's the case, it's not safe. It's not safe for the fire department. It's substandard. It doesn't work. You're going to add 44 average daily trips, based on the ratio of parking spots and the planning commission report, to really what's essentially a one-way road. Doesn't make sense. It's not safe. So the question we have specifically for the fire department, or transportation, or whomever, is, is there going to be restricted parking on this street? I don't know, because the residents have never been advised that there's going to be restricted parking. That is their parking. So we would like to know, and I guess I'll stop right there if we can get an answer, because it's really confusing, I'm getting different answers, but nothing very clear. If I may, I don't know if I can stop or...
I don't know why not.
I know we've heard about the public right-ofway of 40 feet from Mr. Vaca earlier. He says it's not 40 feet. He says it's 30 feet.
Well, the current street is 30 feet, but the right-ofway is 40 feet. Is that correct, the public right-ofway?
But if it's not being used, what is?
That's my understanding, that the map you have there, there's a 40-foot right-ofway, there's a 30-foot road in the middle of that right-ofway, and the other five feet that would be on the CEDC property would have to be improved, but they're not required to improve the remainder of the street.
And what about sidewalks on Center? They're not being required to do sidewalks? I thought they were required to do sidewalks, gutters, whole shebang.
Madam Chair, sorry. Madam Chair and Mr. Iducas. Anyway, they...along the project frontage of Center Street, they're required to curb, gutter, and sidewalk according to the standard county plate, so that section of Center Street will be completed. I believe Mr. Cohen correctly points out that the sidewalk will not continue after you leave the CEDC property, and there's currently curb and gutter, but no paved sidewalk, and people walk on a dirt strip as they approach the commercial corner at Orchard. So there isn't a sidewalk there now, but it's being used now as a dirt path, and after this project, a portion of that dirt path, which currently exists, will be sidewalked.
So the lack of sidewalk beyond the proposed...beyond this specific parcel falls upon the adjacent property owners to improve on?
It's not the responsibility of CDC to do improvements on other people's property.
Correct.
I'd just point out, the current situation is there's no sidewalk, and after this project, a portion will be sidewalked. So it's actually an improvement over the current conditions.
The frontage will have sidewalk.
The frontage will have sidewalk.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
And I'm sorry, because I'm not as quick, but I'm still looking for clarity on Market Street, and if we could have the fire department come up and answer that, if there is going to be...if they're going to accept a 14-foot one-way road, basically.
We still have fire here in the back of the room. He can come forward if he would like. My recollection of his comments, because I think I asked that question, was, since it's 30 feet wide, basically, that with cars parked on either side of Market, that would still leave approximately 12-foot passage, and it would be tight but doable approaching the back of the parcel where it opens up to 35 feet. Is that my recollection correct?
Yes, I mean, when looking at it, we really have two scenarios with regard to Market Street. We have existing condition, which, you know, obviously, all those existing residences along there, the same concern would apply that is being looked at from this project as if we had any type of fire incident in one of those existing residences with cars parked on both sides, with that single, basically, single lane of traffic through there. Getting equipment in to deal with that situation would be certainly cumbersome. With regards to this project, you see the portion of their frontage on Market Street of the CEDC property, it's typical protocol to improve just along the frontage, so any off-site improvements they would be required would be just their frontage. So we're still kind of left with the existing condition, which would need to be explored through Traffic Division of whether or not we could go back and stripe that existing portion of Market Street to the west to kind of leave a two-lane...because really, a 12-foot travel lane does not allow for...our fire engines are 10 feet wide plus the mirror, so we've never been able to cross oncoming traffic with a 12-foot travel lane.
So the current problem that exists on Market Street for fire, should it have to respond, will still remain there regardless of this project going forward unless county roads or someone in the county enforces, expands, widens the road to the right-ofway width to allow you more maneuverability down Market?
Correct. If this project was not to even be in front of us today, that existing condition would still exist with us having concerns getting down that street as it exists. Now, to mitigate it, whether it's widening or it's just simply posting no parking down one side, allowing parking on one side of Market Street, which would leave approximately, if it's 30 feet wide, roughly eight foot for parallel parking, so we'd be down, you know, what, 22 feet? So 11-foot travel lanes, which is...it's tight, but it's doable to allow two-way traffic through there. But that, again, that would have to be explored as a completely separate item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at far? No, thank you very much. Mr. Cohen?
I really appreciate that. I think what's happening is we're adding to a problem that's existing, not just keeping the same one. Adding 44 trips on that road is increasing a safety risk, and I think that certainly would be detrimental to the public interest. And if you own a house on that street and you can no longer park there, I think that would be detrimental to your convenience. So let's...I want to ensure that the Piruvians, who are also low-income at times, you know, get the same respect.
Mr. Cohen, are you still...
I'm still on Market Street.
Presenting as Piru Neighborhood Council?
Certainly, yeah. That was the problem.
Okay. If I can get you to try to kind of start to wrap it up a little bit.
Certainly, certainly. The sheriff also sent an email...
Obviously, you have other things to say.
Yeah, the sheriff also sent an email in regard to the public safety, and I didn't get a chance to see the response, and the sheriff, the chief of police, was concerned about the 30-foot road as well.
I'm sorry, was what? Mr. Cohen?
There was an email from the chief of police of Fillmore that was sent on 12/3/2014. I can give you a copy, but it should be in your package.
No, we have it.
Awesome.
It's exhibit G.
Okay, good. So I didn't get a chance to see the comment and the response, but obviously, public safety is concerned about that road as well. And in regard to AIPAC, you know, it's funny, because it's Zone R6, so it isn't subject to the buffer zone, but then it's not subject to 8.3.1 in the Piru community guidelines because it's two stories next to a residential. So I don't know which rule you get to use. It seems to be unfair to use both, but the community specifically did not want...the reason why that rule came along was because we had a lot of single-family, single-story residents in Piru. That's the history of it. And when a new development comes up and it's next door to that, they're looking down on your house. You have no privacy. That's the basis of the rule. That's why the community was so supportive of that. We're like, okay, fine, if we're going to have these type of developments, type meaning two-story, not low-income, not farmworker, type, two-story, pull them back a foot, pull them back a house, so that they're not looking straight down on the guy that's been there 50 years. That's the best. That's the basis of the rule. So, I'll, I'll wrap up. I appreciate, I, I look forward to really, I would hope that we could get definitive answers on Market Street before you approve anything. It's significant to the community. Center Street's significant to the community. There's not a rush for safety. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes all your comments, both as representing the Piru Council and Rancho Temescal.
I have different comments as Rancho Temescal.
Okay. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Chairman Rodriguez, and Planning Commission members. My name is Matthew Freeman. I am the general manager of the Camulus Ranch, and we've been an agricultural operation since the days of Spanish land grant, and we continue to farm actively in the Piru area and, and right next to this proposed development. We have a lot of concerns, primarily, again, public safety and public health. And as an agricultural entity, I'm concerned about, about this proposal. And I will say, I, I have, was never notified of the A-PAC meeting, or I would have been there. I would have, I have had one conversation with Cabrillo that was back in the summer or fall of 2012, and I wrote them a letter, again, stating that if they were going to move forward with this type of project, that just like they did under Vali Naranahal, where they did put together a, a buffer to protect our ongoing agricultural activities. And that, to me, as we talked about, that was brought up property rights. You know, farming's extremely difficult. They're looking at this as, from an economic point of view, and I'm looking at this from an economic point of view, and, as well as safety. And, and currently, we work extremely hard to safely use materials to allow us to produce lemons, and we have grapefruit and, and avocados just to the south of this as well. But we do not know what the future of farming is going to be. And currently, you are probably aware that we have the arrival of the Asian Citrusilat, which has moved into Ventura County, which in time is, believe, will vector a disease called the, or Huanglongbing, HLB, citrus regreening. And so, we may currently be using a certain set of chemicals and pesticides right now, but as things change and economic conditions occur, we may be removed, or may be required to change our cropping pattern, which may require, as pointed out by, rightly so by Commissioner Onstott, that we may become more aggressive than what we're doing. And I'm concerned about housing coming right up to our project. And I don't even know how close that is. Is that eight feet away? I mean, there is drift, and, and, and I don't know the mentality. It's probably something about the circular effect when we're using our speed sprayers and the way that air circulates to encompass the trees. But you, you, you're going to put particles in the air and make them airborne, and that's the whole reason to having a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. Now, if they can't build their housing economically, because of economics, to get a return on their investment, I have to do the same thing in my business, look at returns on investment. I'm sorry. But if there's four, or five, or six homes that are set back, and people are able to, to, then we're all good neighbors. And I just question the efficacy and efficiency of having a chain-link fence. I have a chain-link fence that I put up twelve years ago to keep people from getting into our orchard, which is cut repeatedly, and we have theft and vandalism. We repair it, and it's repaired continually. So, I, to think that, I mean, I'm going to quote, you know, Pollyanna, that it's going to be a perfect world, and, and people are going to go under the bridge, which they do, and they're going to come into our orchard, which they do, or they're going to cut a chain-link fence, and even if, even if there are two chain-link fences, I know people potentially, even with the screening, a mesh screening, and some trees, put an eight-foot wall and put forty or fifty-foot mature trees along there, that then will diffuse anything, but move the, move the houses away and set it back from the property to protect children, who we know have smaller bodies, and they have higher respiration, and so they breathe more, and they're more susceptible to, to pesticides and chemical exposure. Nobody wants anyone to get hurt. And so, we're concerned about being able to continue to do our thing. We didn't, it's kind of a chicken and egg. I keep hearing this, well, it's zoned R6. We didn't zone that R6. We never put that on there. So, then if that ties A-PAC, and you is, you know, well, we're following the guidelines because it's R6, and this is then the, the acceptable buffer for an R6 zoning, well, we didn't request that. Again, we've been doing this, and we continue to want to do this, because that's what we do as a company. We're not developers. And so, we have to protect our interests, and, and so we have no, we don't notify anybody when we're spraying. We're cognizant and recognize that we, we try to do the best and use, you know, as the drift in the morning is to the east, and then later on in the morning, it goes to the west. So, we're always trying to modify our agricultural operations to protect the public, because nobody wants a problem. We keep talking about mitigation, and well, there's good possibilities. I have to deal with that. I'm the guy responsible for that. I take it extremely seriously. And I don't want, you know, potential exposure to, to anyone, because, well, it doesn't fit our economic model. Well, that's the real world. I pushed six hundred acres of trees out in 2000, Valencia oranges, primarily because the economic modeling changed. I had to go to more row crops. And so, it's a very cyclical business, and we do take a long-term, you know, strategy when we're planting trees. Can we get an ROI in five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years? You know, you're looking that far out into the future. And so, we're very concerned, and I believe that based on just health and safety issues alone, I have to pull tractors out on Center Street from my gates that are right adjacent in that corner, that blind corner. You know, they're slow-moving vehicles. They pull out, they're big, there's forklifts, tractors, discs, spray equipment, all kinds of things that go back and forth, in and out of our property all day long. And I'm concerned there for the safety of my employees and the, the public in general, and contractors that, that spray and bring equipment in and out, and picking semi, you know, there's a lot of activity culturally.
Excuse me, sir. Did I just understand you to say that you access and egress the agricultural property somewhere in proximity to the bridge?
Oh, yes.
Is that an entrance and exit point?
Yes. And nobody's discussed that. And literally, semis with, you know, bins of fruit and oranges, and then also within the Filming Community, they will bring things into to help support the local economy there as well. So, it's a very, you know, it's a, it's a unique parcel. But again, we didn't zone it R6, but yet we're, now we're saying, well, that's R6, you know? And that open, I, you know, that open space, that's the first time I've seen where the open space is, well, is, is that, you know, from that line, then certainly, the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer would force and affect those, those, those proposed structures right next to our But if it's developed, if it's, you know, set back and everybody could live together, wonderful. But good fences make good, good neighbors. I don't know, is that Frost or, or...
Whitman.
Whitman. Thank you. So...
Follow-up question to your response to Mr. Onstott.
Follow-up question to Mr. Onstott's question and your response. Is there a service road that you use along that eastern property line of this proposed project?
At the, at the end of the lemons on the...
Right. At the end of these lemon, these rows of citrus that run, that run alongside this, the eastern property line of this project, from your entrance off-center, going southbound along that property line, that eastern property line? Do you have a service road there, or is it just row crops?
It's just a dirt, a dirt road that's on the ends of all the point rows of the...
Okay.
So, if the trees were gone, then that would become more, more rows of farm field, you know, for example. There's drainage issues. What kind of chemicals or pesticides are they possibly going to use and potentially drift into my orchards? You know, we have this whole focus globally on the GAP program, which are essentially good agricultural practices. Well, what if they apply something, and it drifts into my crop? And then somebody gets sick, and then, you know, there's a chain of custody, and they look back, and they find out that they run off or drift from what they're doing, you know? A chain-link fence is, is not adequate. Where's the drainage going to go? Their, their Vali Naranahal project, and I could take people out there to show them the southwestern corner where it's actually breached, and it's gone over and washed out part of the bank of Camulus Ranch, because they, they did not put in enough, they should have probably sunk their soccer field and made it a huge retention patient.
If this project, excuse me.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
If this, you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay. If this project were to be approved, and there's a fence designed to be put there, a chain-link fence with, would your, would you have a preference on the fence being chain-linked or being solid? And I'm not talking about the fact this project's going to be approved. I'm just asking your input, since you did not receive the opportunity for input with A-PAC, right?
Correct. That's correct. I'm shocked. And again, I don't know what A-PAC, how they looked at it. If they looked at it under the R6, well, it's zoned R6, therefore, we have to apply this, this policy for that, for that guideline. If it was OS, then there'd be no question, right? It'd be a hundred-and-fifty feet.
I'm asking, as, as an ag operator there, and you had to have a fence, there was going to be a fence there, if you had, would have a preference?
I, oh, definitely. I, I would say an eight-foot block fence, because the people from South Help Housing, when they built the low-income housing, which was sold to people directly, they put a, a block wall. It's not high enough, because people still breach it, the kids, and they go in my orchard, and they, you know, vandalize it, and there's three hundred paint cans there continually with additional theft and vandalism. But I would, I would want an eight-foot block wall. I would want super-tall, mature trees, and I wouldn't want any housing right up. I, there needs to be a buffer, because I know how things move in the real world. I mean, they're volatile, and everybody here said, well, we're trying to mitigate it. There's even Cabrillo, if you look back in the testimony, they said, well, yeah, there could be some particulates, and that's why they're putting venting and, and things on certain sides of the building to try to, you know, control as much airflow and things like that. But it's, this is a public health and a public safety issue.
Okay. I think Mr...
And I don't want to be in court, you know, because...
I think Mr. Onstott had a question. I'm looking at the aerial photograph, which has been up. I don't think you need to see it necessarily. How close are these trees at the closest point along each of these rows to the property line? What's, can you give me an estimate?
Twenty feet.
They're twenty feet?
Probably.
Okay.
Twenty-two, twenty, at the end of the tree row.
Right.
And various...
Thank you. Mr. Idukas' question.
How long have you been doing what you do for Rancho Camulus?
Fifteen years this February. Not that I'm counting.
And when, when did you become aware that the property that you were managing was zoned R6 for housing?
When did I become aware of that? It's been a number of years. I mean, it could be, I mean, it's, I don't know, oh, I, I think it was already zoned prior to my taking over management of the, the Camulus Ranch, to my notice. I don't know the year or time when that was zoned. I have no idea.
Okay. I could find out from, I'm just wondering when you were made aware. Does, does your company have any plans to develop that, that property that's zoned for housing?
No.
And the only plans that your company has is to maintain orchards or convert to row crops, depending on what's economic for the company?
That's, that's our plan for the foreseeable future. I do not know anything contrary to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We interrupted your present, your comments.
No, I, I'm... I think that's essentially, I mean, I just, it's, our business is hard enough, where I'm the chairman of the board, also, Fillmore Piru Citrus, so I'm very aware of the economics of, of this portion of the county, the need for housing, the need for jobs, and our lemons that are taken right there and packed, as well as our citrus, and into the packing house in Piru. So, we need jobs. We need, we, we don't need to lose more farmland, you know, because of the impact, potential negative impact, and potential safe health and, you know, liability exposure that that could present for us. And so, you know, it's a, it's a broad and breland. We're very much interconnected. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bibi Jimenez.
Thank you for your time. I'm here also to represent my mother. She's, her family's been in Piru for over a hundred years. Her name is Marie Carolyn Jimenez, and she was one of several members of the Citizen Committee that helped put together the Piru Area Plan that is part of the general plan. Somebody mentioned earlier the affordable issue being the underlying driver for the community's concerns. I find that offensive on several levels. First of all, if you looked at the income levels that were shown previously on the screen, you'll see that nobody's making a lot of money in Piru. And furthermore, most of the long-term residents and continued residents have some background and work experience working in the fields. My mother was a migrant farm, farmworker. Her parents were migrant farmworkers. My father was a foreman in the citrus orchards in Fillmore. So, we get it. There's not a lack of compassion or understanding with respect to the need for affordable housing. So, I just want to make that clear. So, that's something that should be considered in terms of the context that the attorney was talking about earlier. That's the context. Also, in terms of the parking issue, there are a lot of concerns about overflow parking onto the streets. I only have a couple pictures, but these pictures were taken recently. I'll provide for you, just a couple days ago, day and night photos.
If we accept these, we don't get them back?
Oh, you can have them. I don't, I don't need them back. They basically show the high concentration of on-street parking on the existing Cabrillo project. This condition exists nowhere else in the town of Piru, and that's the concern. Part of what the Piru Area Plan, as well as the guidelines and the previously mentioned Piru Community Smart Growth and Mixed Use Study that SCAG helped the community prepare, part of the underlying vision for all of those documents was to maintain the rural character of Piru. This concentration of on-street parking is not consistent with that rural character of Piru. This is, these, and this vision is a stated policy and goal in the Piru Area Plan. That's, that's the main issue, and the concern is that the project, as it's now designed in terms of architectural style, density, and overall site design, is inconsistent with the Piru Area Plan and the other documents. The MND incorrectly concludes that the project is substantially in conformance with the general plan and with Piru Area Plan. I don't think that you can make that finding. You now have statements on the record from at least four members of the Piru Area Plan Citizens Committee, saying that the project is not consistent with the Piru Area Plan or the intended guidelines. Mr. Cohen, Mr. Finch spoke earlier. Ms. Bergamo has submitted correspondence. You have correspondence from my mother and myself as well, stating the same thing, outlining the issues relative to compatibility. That's a finding that you need to make. I do not think that the MND thoroughly analyzed the issues of consistency. The community has over and over and over again reiterated formally and informally its desire to maintain a rural character. A high-density project, as described by Commissioner Onstott, is not consistent with the character of Piru. It is primarily single-family homes, and we certainly don't have many homes, I can't think of any other than perhaps the mansion that is thirty-five feet or higher. It's just not part of the character of the town. And I think that will limit your ability, although you may be limited in terms of the discretionary action you take on the permit requested itself, you are also being asked to take action on the MND. And I don't think that you can make the necessary findings to approve that document. Yeah, that's primarily my concerns, and we would hope... Yeah, that's primarily my concerns and we would hope that if you've got four people from that Piru Area Citizen Commission Committee saying that they view compatibility differently than the staff views compatibility with the Piru area plan, then there's a big disconnect. There's a big disconnect between what staff is interpreting from the plan and what the community's intended vision was. And there should be some consideration taken for addressing that issue because that's going to be an ongoing, long-term concern and problem for Piru itself. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Maria Rosa, Santa Rosa.
My name is Maria Santa Rosa and I'm a resident in Valle Narangal. And I come here just to tell you how I feel living there. I just want to tell you, I know they're concerned about a lot of safety issues and all about that. I respect that. But I wish they would have a little bit of compassion and ask some of the residents or people that live there and ask us, "How do you feel living there?" Well, I'll tell you. I'm new at this Ventura County. I come from Bell Gardens and I lived there 30-something years. I don't feel that just because I lived there so many years, I owned it. I owned that city. I think everybody is equal and we should be treated equal. And I was up here and then the economy, I had everything. I own house, everything, cars and everything, but we lost everything. There was no work anywhere, only but the fields. I'm not ashamed. I don't need nobody to be sorry for me because I'm very proud. Working on the farm, working, picking lemons, it's so hard, but somebody has to do it. And we're not asking for government money. We're just hard-working people. We just need a chance. Now, before this, when I lost everything, me and my family, I was living in a garage with my girls, my husband. And to tell you the truth, when I was there, it was so cold that we all cuddled up, all of us, on the bed because we couldn't stand the coldness. It was so hard. And then they told us about Cabrillo, these new apartments, and we applied. And we felt blessed that we got it. We couldn't even believe it when they told us, "You could move here." We just need a chance to build up a future. We can't own it. They want us to own. We can't. They don't pay you that much on the field. How are we gonna pay by a house? Just give us the opportunity to grow and stay and try to be something. We're poor, yeah, but we have what we need. I don't feel ashamed of it. I just hope you guys feel a little bit of compassion and say, "Okay, you know, they deserve to live in a decent home. You know, we work hard. We're not asking you to give us for free or anything. We just work, but we don't have enough money to own a house." And of course, we tried to live on our own, but we can't. The rents are too much. So, we all have to gather up. Now that I live there, I even cry inside my home and I couldn't believe it that I was living in a house with that much space. And I was saying, "Is this true?" I'm very blessed. And I don't feel ashamed to tell you that I lost everything or anything because that made me stronger and have a heart of other people that are struggling. And I thank God I lost everything because now I know how it feels to be down here. But there's always hope to go up again. And we just need a chance. Just... I know there's a lot of issues about parking and stuff, but please think about the people. Ask all the ones... My neighbors and all the ones that live there. Ask them. They'll tell you the same thing. They're blessed of having some decent place to live. And a lot of them are afraid to come and speak out. I'm afraid... I never spoke out, only in the city council, just that time and this time, because I was hurt, because everybody was making you feel that you're not welcome. But I'm just saying how I feel. I'm so blessed of living there and I just would like other people to get the chance to have somewhere decent to live. That's all we're asking, just a chance. I mean, they're already judging us and vandalism and we're not even living there yet. Vandalism was there before Valle Narangal was there. The parking issue, yeah, we tried to fix it. We all went inside our parking and then the other people were parking there. Why can't we be equal? They could because they own a house and a ranch and we're not, just because we're poor. I'm just saying that, how I feel. I don't want you to feel sorry. I'm just telling you, speaking my heart, how I feel, that I'm so blessed and thankful for these people that think about other people, that they have a chance to live in a nice home and not paying so much rent because me and my husband, working together, we couldn't afford a house. We were still in the garage. And now, we could afford it, thank God. And I don't have a brand-new car or anything. I drive a 1989 van and I'm proud because it takes me wherever I need. But when I'm up here, then I'll have the chance to be where other people are, own their homes, their ranch. I just need the opportunity to grow. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Emilia Garcia Gracia, is she here?
Is it a quick translate or is there a designated translator?
There is not.
Okay, so I'll impromptu.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Yo soy una residente de Valle Narangal.
Pardon? Excuse me. A moment. Emilda?
Imelda.
Is she... Apido?
Gracia.
Gracia. G-R-A-C-I-A.
Continue. Siga.
Sí, mira, yo soy residente de Valle Narangal y vengo a aprobar, a que aprueben los apartamentos.
She is a resident of Valle Narangal and she's here in support of the building of the new project.
Porque pues yo no tuve la oportunidad de ir a la escuela porque tuve 30 años trabajando en el field.
She didn't have... Because she did not have the opportunity to go to school because she worked 30 years in the fields.
Y el dinero nunca me alcanzaba para comprar, para agarrar, ahorrar para una casa.
She never had enough savings with working in the fields to purchase a home.
Y pues ahora yo estoy viviendo allí y estoy con mi familia, mis hijos y me da tranquilidad el saber que voy a... Mis hijos tienen un techo, ¿dónde vivir?
And she feels very calm or it's calm-nerving to know that she has a roof over her head with her and her sons where to live.
Porque es muy duro irse uno a trabajar y no tener un lugar seguro.
It's very difficult. The reason is because it's very difficult to go to work and not have a safe place para vivir.
Para vivir.
Safe place to live.
Y pues ahora con este programa nos hemos beneficiado varias familias al estar pagando un precio que va con nuestro sueldo.
So, she supports the programs that, in her case, her rent payment, it goes with her salary and it's not market, so she's able to afford it.
Y pues quisiera que se aprobar este nuevo proyecto para nuevas familias que tienen necesidades.
She would like for this project to be approved for other families to have the opportunity to go through the same program she did.
Y pues muchas gracias y disculpen por no saber el idioma, pero pues no tuve tiempo de... Ahora quiero aprenderlo ahora que ya estoy muy vieja.
She says, "Thank you for the time." And she's still... She apologizes for not speaking the language, but now that she's older, she's going to try to learn it.
Gracias.
Gracias. I have no other speaker cards.
The farmer?
I'm sorry. We have County Fire coming back.
Chair Rodriguez, Commissioners, I'd just like to make a quick clarification on some previous discussion we had with regards to the parking lot from the north, the northern side. We have tactical access to that southeast building. So, if that southern parking lot was to go away for whatever reason, we still have adequate tactical access from the north as measured from the end of the paved access. So, we can tactically for fire and medical access to that building. And the primary response, being a center street address, the primary response would most likely come in from that northern access anyways. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that if that southern parking lot was gone, tactically we could still operate an emergency situation on that southeast of the building.
Thank you. We have no other speaker cards. What's the Commissioner's pleasure?
I have some questions.
Keep going.
I have questions of staff.
Questions of staff?
Yeah. Do I do it after lunch or...
That's what I'm asking. Do you want to break or continue?
Whichever your pleasure is.
Well, if we break, we lose some of the audience.
Right.
As soon as they start.
Staff, you good with going a little bit longer? Okay. And we have questions of staff.
I just wanted staff to follow up with the observation or the worry that there were different standards used with regard to the Piru area plan being used in some cases and not in others and the 50-foot buffer... I'm sorry, the 150-foot buffer in existing agricultural use, even though the zoning is not... It's not zoned for farming.
So, Commissioner Duquesne, I think maybe we can all take a stab at answering those questions, but I have in front of me the County of Ventura Agricultural Urban Buffer Policy and it's a policy dated 7/1906. Now, it's not an ordinance. The board had this item before them, as did the Planning Commission, probably back in 2005, and they neglected to adopt this ordinance. They didn't want it to be ordinance. They wanted it to be policy and they wanted it to be administered through A-PAC on a case-by-case basis. So, it's not an ordinance. It's a policy that is given to A-PAC to implement on projects as they see fit. But specifically what it says and why the 150-foot wouldn't apply is it says that the policy provides guidelines on ongoing non-farming activities that are permitted adjacent to land in crop or orchard production classified by the California Department of Conservation, IFI, important farmland inventory as prime or statewide important, unique or local. These guidelines apply to projects requiring discretionary approval by the county or a city where the proposed non-farming activity is abutting or on land zoned A-E, O-S, or R-A. So, that's when these policies even come into effect. That doesn't mean if you have a land adjacent to farming and just because of the zoning is there, that doesn't mean that we didn't look at the issue. I think that the CEDC was proactive and went to A-PAC even before they submitted the project to make sure that they designed the project. If they were going to get a different buffer or a different policy or a different interpretation that they were going to need to design around, they would have done it at the time. So, they went a month before they even submitted the project and made sure that they designed the project with the guidance of A-PAC at that time. So, you know, they were actively engaging the agricultural office through this entire project. Now, you can see from the property, there are homes closer to this project that have no buffer and there are vacant parcels, zoned residential, that will develop there next to, you know... And there's not room to put a hundred... If you put a 150-foot buffer back onto those property owners, that probably is a takings issue. It might take the entire property. So, I mean, they're small, they're constrained, and so I think the agricultural office and A-PAC did the best that they could, given the projects. So, even if they had a different buffer zone, given the fact that it's really a policy, this would have been, to me, an easy issue for them to apply the incentive to saying, you know, "We need a waiver of this policy because we're not going to be able to develop, given 150-foot." So, I mean, they could have, had A-PAC even applied it, they could have asked for a waiver and unless we can say it's a public health or safety issue, we wouldn't have been able to deny it. And I think, given the proximity of hundreds of parcels in Ventura County that are residential adjacent to agriculture and the fact that, you know, we have an agricultural commissioner's office that weighs in on those urban conflicts all the time and the fact that pesticides is not allowed to drift from your property, you know, that these two uses do coexist together. And I think that, you know, given the proximity of these projects next to the farming operation and the ones that are already there, you can see in the slide that it's a heavily developed area adjacent to this, almost the entire way down. But I'm not sure that we could say it's a public health and safety issue for these, you know, 24 homes. And I also wanted to add in that the, you know, they could... Any developer could have come in and proposed anything. It didn't have to be low-income housing. It could have been any sort of housing. And the zoning for that would have been 21 units, right? So, they're only asking another three. They could have asked for another 10, right? And so, you know, this is... Whether it's this project or another project, there'll be a project that goes in there with some sort of density of development because that is what the zoning allows.
And then what about the... They didn't use the word cherry-picking, but there was a criticism that the Piru standards were not utilized.
The guidelines?
The guidelines were not.
So, I just want to talk a little bit about the guidelines. It's always hard for people to, you know, understand guidelines as opposed to ordinance and, you know, if you say, "Well, they're only guidelines," right? And so, you know, if you're on one side of that issue, you love the fact that they're only guidelines. If you're on the other side of the issue, you want it to be an ordinance, right? But they are guidelines. And the way that they were developed is it says... And if you look in the Piru Community Design Guidelines, it says, "All construction is encouraged," right, "to reflect the rural aesthetic of the community." And then it goes on and it talks about, "For purposes of community design, the guidelines will use the term 'shall' and 'will' to denote mandatory standards of requirement, while the terms 'should' or 'may' indicate recommended guidelines that may be modified or waived by the county decision-makers if an applicant can demonstrate overriding circumstances that render the guidelines infeasible or impractical, given the circumstances, or the intent of the guidelines will be achieved in a different manner." So, I think as we've described above, you know, 100... There's 106 guidelines. The six that can't be met, you know, the issue with the trees, the issue with the stepping back, those issues, those are all the should or may guidelines. So, you know, it's not that we neglected the guidelines at all. We looked to them very carefully. The architect, I think, came up and said, "They looked to them very carefully." There's a picture in the guidelines as they quickly point out, very similar to this project. So, the intent of the guidelines wasn't just to, you know, recreate the community of Piru, right, as it stands now, but have some vision to... right, as it stands now, but have some vision to the community as well. And so there are vacant parcels, and, and I think we have that map that we could show you, there are vacant parcels out there that have been, um, through this process, the, the community design guidelines, the update of the Piru area, and through the EIR process, has hundreds of single-family homes that can be developed at market rate. So those tentative tracts have, have been approved, uh, Mr. Cohen has some of those, Mr. Finch has close to 200, you know, market, uh, units that he can develop as single-family market-rate homes. So there's a huge portion of Piru that's really been entitled, once the economy bounces back, or once they, they want to develop that, that's, you know, that will also be developed with these guidelines, but can be developed, they're not restricted, they can be market-rate housing, they can be for-sale housing, they can be for-rent housing. So, you know, we, we can put that map up and show you, you know, what the community is envisioned to look like after all of the development occurs. This is just, uh, one 24-unit, you know, low-income, four rental housing. So I've heard several times that the, the community was parket, you know, was promised market-rate units, so it wasn't filed as a market-rate unit community, it was filed, uh, the application for the, the Development Review Committee, what they come into before they even submit to the county, just to get everybody's feelings on this project, and they went through a lot, you know, from, from the removal of the trees, to, to working with the transportation department, the safety issues, that there were some flooding issues, I mean, they worked through a myriad of issues to get to, to where they are today. But the county doesn't say to them, "You have to be market-rate, or you have to be for-sale, or you have to be for-rent," you know, that's, that's the business decision that they're making, and that's a business decision that other property owners that own a residential piece of property can, can come in and do. So even though I think that that was their vision, they tried that to begin with, but a lot of projects change when the economy changes, or, you know, when the community's feelings change, and, and this project then was submitted, um, and processed as a, you know, a rental. And, and there's, there's job owners in that community that said that they need rental housing, so, you know.
Then, just one last question regarding the eight-foot, um, fence, uh, as it's currently proposed versus a masonry wall. What was the reason for not, for not going with the masonry wall?
I don't believe that the masonry wall, I think the, the waiver of the wall was the wall is required between a parking area and adjacent residential uses, is that correct?
Uh, yes, the, the answer is there's an ordinance, a specific ordinance requirement where you have a parking lot adjacent to residentially-zoned land. Well, in this case, the residentially-zoned land is, is the, is the adjacent orchard, and they, and they have a parking lot, the southern parking lot is next to that land, so that was what was waived, and it has to do with, you know, a, strictly a parking lot standard, not the, not the buildings. So that's, that was one of the incentives that was waived, was not to have a, a short segment of, of, of wall on that side. And that's when they went to APAC and worked out, "Well, what are we gonna do for this entire length of the property line there?"
But would it, would it indeed protect the, the, um, health of the residents to have that wall be masonry versus, um, this permeable, uh, chain-link fence?
Uh, well, uh, I can't imagine that would have any, uh, any substantial effect on protecting anyone from overspray, which would be an illegal act anyway, because it would not have to extend the entire length of the property, only the part that would be next to the parking lot. So you just have a short segment there, the building where people are actually living is not required to have a masonry wall. It's only the parking lot, believe it or not, that, that requires the wall. And that's a stand, that's sort of an urban standard for when you have people starting their cars on a parking lot, you reduce the noise to the adjacent residential area by having a wall around a parking lot.
So I'm not sure that my question was answered. Um, whether it, we can require it or not, would the people who's living in the proposed housing, would they be safer with a masonry wall to protect them from drift? Certainly overspraying doesn't occur on that, on that property.
I, I don't believe that the planning department has the answer to that question. I believe that you would have to ask the ag commissioner's office to answer that question.
If we can have the ag representative come up, yes.
In regards to the wall, I think, well, in regards to the chain-link fence, uh, on that policy that, uh, the planning department was speaking of, it, it always refers to chain-link fence. Now, whether or not a block wall is safer, protects better than a chain-link fence, it all depends, you know, with, with the block wall, depending on what kind of an application is occurring, uh, the force of any material going in that direction, uh, can create like some sort of a Venturi effect, and a wall can allow it to carry up and over and just kind of drag it over. With a chain-link fence, a black mesh, and, uh, the appropriate planting materials as they are planted, it can, again, it can go through, but it will break it up and hopefully, uh, provide a better barrier. So, you know, it, it all depends on how you look at it. So it, it can, depending again on, on what the activity is on the, on the ag end of it. Uh, and again, the, uh, you did mention that it's an illegal activity to drift, uh, growers do, uh, take into consideration the, at, the, the weather conditions, so they, they try to minimize what applica, the type of, uh, any kind of movement of the, of the material that they're using. And they would be not, uh, there was a comment earlier on a speed sprayer, they would not be spraying on both ends, uh, obviously, they, they take into consideration the pressure, the weather, uh, the, the wind, and it's, for the most part, that, that spraying is gonna be occurring to, towards the east.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll close the hearing then. I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, uh, your final opportunity to address the commission.
Thank you. Just, uh, putting it all in perspective, we've been working on this progress since 2012. Um, we have, uh, sent letters to Camullos on the other side, we have not had a chance to, this is my second time actually meeting the chair of Camullos, so I'm actually glad that I finally got a chance to say hello. But, um, we are diligent, we're, we're gonna work with the neighbors next door, our property manager, our director, along with the new property manager, whoever it may be, we're gonna make sure they're well-versed in the agricultural, um, impacts to the project. The other thing, um, we feel like we're improving the neighborhood, it's existing, uh, what's existing now, when, with our project coming in, it's gonna bring up the upgrades to the much-needed infrastructures, along with sidewalk and widening of the street. So, um, on our side, we actually feel like it's an improvement. So, if you have any questions for me, Al.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Westman.
First, first of all, thank you for your time, your effort, and the staff that you brought here, very, very informed. I always have one question. Are there any conditions that have been presented today that you do not agree with?
Um, no, pretty much everything we're, we're in agreement with.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a question. Commissioner Onstott. If there's a determination that the buffer, as it's called, isn't sufficient for safety purposes, would you be amenable to, to change that application to include something that is determined to be safer? Would you entertain the idea?
We would entertain the idea, I guess the, the, the bigger picture here is, this is, there's existing conditions as it is right now. There are, there are residential homes down, um, I guess we'll use them out with the satellite view, that are going, or that have been placed, and they're right next to the orchard. Actually, you can see them down there. What we're proposing is actually a step up and above from that. We're putting a vegetative buffer, we're adding some vegetative, I, I think there's two row crops?
They're actually, um, it is, it is based on the, on the policy, and it is an eight-foot chain-link fence with a mesh. There, uh, the trees have to be over 15-foot tall, plus some low shrubs.
So we're.
As, as defined in the, in the ag buffer policy.
Right.
The only thing that we're not meeting is the 150.
Right.
Why don't you come up, Mr. Rodriguez, why don't you come up?
So practically, I guess what I, what I'm trying to say, or, come on, D Y.
I just, no, I just, just to repeat, we're meeting, based on the ag buffer, already determined that is the safe sort of process, we're meeting everything, the only thing that we're not meeting right now is the distance, the 150 feet, because obviously 150 feet will, you know, the problem, we can get one house in there, um, because it is about three-quarters of the property with 150 feet out. The, the chain-link fence is defined as a fencing required by the policy, that we're putting the taller-than-50-foot trees to get the spray, and we also have the low shrubs, so we're actually meeting all the requirements of the policy, as this is sort of written, except the 150 feet. Um, so if the, and I, I guess that's where you kind of, we're stepping back, if there's a safer, defined by the ag, the APAC, as a safer fencing material, I imagine we should be able to entertain that. Uh, but that is what is defined right now as appropriate fencing, uh, requirement, because...
I understand that, sir.
So, so I, I imagine that as the project moves forward, if you were to approve the project, entertaining a different type of material that would be safer for the residents, it should be something we should be doing. Uh, but right now, what's been defined as the safest fencing by the, by APAC is actually what we have in the project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I echo his comments.
Mr. Garcia, anything else?
No.
Questions, Mr. Garcia? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I had asked county council earlier on to discuss the issues on condition 32, uh, particularly what has to do with county liability being potentially the owner-in-succession is my concern. County council?
Right, thank you, and, um, just for everyone's benefit, um, the proposed condition 32 is entitled Affordable Housing Agreement and Equity Sharing Agreement, and, um, the purpose of that condition is to, um, require the county to, um, affirm that the, the, the property is being rented out to, um, the affordability standards under which the, the, um, the, uh, density bonus is being granted, and so that's the sole purpose, the, the agreement doesn't have anything to do about the county stepping in and, and taking it over, it's, it's a private project, and, um, and unless the, um, the CEO's office understands otherwise, my understanding is that the, the only purpose of the agreement is for us to, again, assure the affordability, and in terms of the equity sharing, uh, agreement aspect, that doesn't come into play here, because these will be rental units, that language, um, the condition itself, uh, mentions equity sharing if applicable, and so the, this, the language of the condition was basically cut and pasted from the government code, um, that applies here, and so the equity sharing, again, doesn't apply, because these are rental units. And so, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise the issue because, again, the concern of the 150-foot buffer, the spraying, et cetera, uh, we had testimony here not too long ago about another operation in the Pyru area impacting the health of people. And, uh, as the county, we tend to be the owner-in-succession of problems, whether they be mines or whatever else, uh, because we are the one thing that's gonna be here in 55 years, hopefully. So my concern is, I know we're indemnified.
Yeah, he will be.
I will be. Ate enough Twinkies when I was younger. And so my concern is, is, um, you know, if we do get a child to become sick because of the spraying, we've already heard the farmer saying that they're gonna get named, they're gonna name, but the eventual deep pockets is us, and we are the deep pockets that could fix any particular situation. So I just wanted clarity on that whole issue, because of the sensitivity of what we're talking about, that we have zoned density residential next to OS with existing agriculture, and these are issues that will come up in 10, 12, 20 years. And so, that's the reason I had this discussion take place, is for clarity, because, except for me, everybody else will be gone today, so, uh, but I want to thank county council for make, providing that clarity for me.
Commissioner Dukas.
I forgot something. Um, I also wanted to ask staff to respond to the, um, question about the difference in five feet versus 10 feet, the blind curve, the, the driveway, I believe we have, uh, staff here that was going to talk about the, the safety of that driveway off of Center, and its proximity to the bridge.
Okay.
And the blind curve.
We're gonna reopen the public hearing to allow further testimony. If you'd go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Richard Herrera with, uh, Public Works Transportation, and so we looked at the site plan of this, um, project, and determined that the site distance to the driveway is adequate for, uh, the speed limit on that road.
Is it the speed limit 25 or the...
Correct, the, the speed, it is posted 25.
So, um, what about the, is there adequate signage between the, I don't know whether it's 40 or 45 as you approach Piru on, on Center? I think you, I think you can approach a lot faster than 25, I think it's 45 miles an hour?
Well, you're referring to the other, on the other side of the bridge?
Yeah.
The Center Street? I believe that's posted 40 or 35.
Okay, and then, and then there's enough time to slow down between, because that's what the testimony that we got is that there was 12 feet between where you could go 40 and where you had to go 25.
Actually, so that whole stretch west of the bridge is posted for 25 miles per hour.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me. Commissioner Onstott. Would you take the same position if there was parking in front of, if all the parking places in front of the project were used?
Well, the width of the roadway will be, uh, you'll have 20 feet on that side of the road, which would provide a 12-foot lane and an eight-foot parking lane, so...
Your testimony wouldn't change if there were, all the parking was utilized?
No, no. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Question. I think we heard earlier that that's one of the two primary entry-exit points into the community of Piru, Center Street from 126, is that, is that correct?
Center Street and then Main Street, yes.
Right. Talking about Center Street, uh, is there a defined commercial vehicle route, um, to get off 26 into town?
A defined commercial.
Or points, or points west toward, um...
No, no, there is not a defined route, no.
So commercial vehicles, um, trucks, including truck-trailer traffic, can either enter off of Main to their destination in or beyond Piru?
Yes.
As well as one, as Center off 126?
Yes. There are no restrictions for trucks.
And... Do you know the volume of traffic, commercial traffic, that comes in and out of those?
I believe there's probably more, more commercial vehicles on, uh, Main Street, because there's a, a packing house down towards, uh, Villa Fustero. I, I don't have the exact numbers, no.
You don't have any knowledge of volume of tra, truck traffic?
Not of truck traffic, no. I, I don't believe it's significant.
Okay.
Probably in a range of 5%, 6% truck traffic.
You referenced the, uh, the plans, uh, in, in your comments about...
Safe-to-your-site issues, did anybody from your staff actually do a prim visit, inspection of the site, or was it all done off-drawings?
We did both, yes. I've been out there myself.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
And, and is there, is there a significance between the elevation being 10 feet lower versus 5 feet lower?
I...
One of the criticisms...
I mean, there, there could be, but in this case, I don't think there is.
Okay.
Because you, if you look at the horizontal, uh, site distance, or the straight-line distance, uh, the, going higher or lower from one point doesn't really affect that sideline.
Okay, and you've looked at these exhibits A, B, and C, these photographs, where there's a disappearing truck?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. And that doesn't change your testimony?
Doesn't, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll close the public hearing again. Okay, deliberations, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Westner.
As always, these things are difficult, and I understand the need to be compassionate and the state requirements, as well as the county requirements of low-income housing and the need for such. Um, but it is the purpose of this body is to ensure the public's safety, not only the people around it, but the residents that may eventually live there. You know, if we can't get the fire trucks in, if we can't get emergency vehicles in, if we don't take the appropriate measures to protect them from, uh, other issues such as the farming next door, then we have failed in our job regardless of who lives there. And that's not the issue. So, I want the public to understand that it's our job to wrestle with that regardless of the socioeconomic situations that's involved. Uh, if I, if I can't get a firefighter in the backyard to save your child, none of this works, not a bit of it. Um, we do have, again, a zoning situation goes back to, well, I know the property line goes back to nineteen twenty-three, and the zoning that came along, and so, staff's appropriate in their analysis that this is a high-density residential, and on and on and on. But as always, whether it be Santa Susana Knolls, Ojai, you know, we have situations, and that's why we exist, that we get to make these decisions. And I've appreciated all the technical information from fire and traffic and ag commissioner and all, all of that, but what we get to do is make that decision of how do we balance the PNC and some of the other issues, and the reality that there's a need for this type of housing in this county. Sadly, um, in the county, we don't have that many because of, obviously, I think, economic situation. Most of this occurs in the urban environment. So, we have an urban use with the twenty-four units being put into a county situation. Uh, I want to make one thing clear, it was brought up, and I think somebody misunderstood my reason for asking, just because you can charge the maximum amount for area, your purpose is to provide those who cannot afford, doesn't mean you're ratcheted up to the top number. You're there to help them have a decent place living. And I appreciate Senora Santa Maria, her presentation, muchas gracias. But, so, that's my caution to those that manage the property. Just because you can charge it, that's not why you're there. And that's not why you're given these benefits, benefits as density bonus and incentives. Um, we have to manage some of these things, and I'm very cautious about the buffer, but staff represented, because of the zoning, the R, a hundred and fifty-foot doesn't apply technically. Reality is, we're gonna have small children next to a farming entity. So, we're, we've looked at all these different standards. So, at this point in time, um, it's gonna change the community, uh, and Mr. Cohen's property stated, it's gonna have an impact on the actual market rate property. But in my past experience, sometimes that does help the community begin to improve, because that's why redevelopment agencies existed in the past, for that particular purpose. Um, so, at this point, I feel I can live with what's being presented by staff.
Commissioner Maggie.
Um, there's no question there's some hiccups in this process, and that's what you get when you try to put five pounds in a four-pound bag. Um, there's a few of these, uh, Piru community guidelines that weren't met, but I don't, I agree, I don't see how you could do it. Uh, yeah, it looks a little bit urban. You talked about maybe changing that a little bit. Uh, the ag buffer is a touchy issue, to me, the touchiest issue of the whole day, uh, and it's still touchy. Uh, visitor parking is vague at best. Uh, but, all that being said, I think this is a really good project. May not be the best spot, but it's the only one that's in town that works for you, and I can understand that. Um, and so, I don't, I don't see any reason not to approve this project.
Commissioner Dukas.
I don't like your roofline. It just, I don't like it. It looks like Googie architecture to me, and I, I wish that, I understand why you need it for the, um, for the solar, but, um, I do think it's gonna stick out by, like a sore thumb. Ordinarily, we'd be able to, um, to deny based on, um, whether or not it goes with the existing community character, but it looks like our hands are really tied by this government code section, uh, on what our mandatory findings for denial are. And we, um, have explored, uh, fire safety and traffic safety, and, uh, safety, uh, against the, the agricultural uses next door, whether it's zoned for that or not. I mean, it exists. So, um, um, and I've, and I've heard also from the ag, um, expert that, uh, that the mesh, um, screen is, uh, better, uh, is the appropriate screening between, uh, this urban use and this ag next door. So, um, I'd, I'd like it ordinarily, um, you know, in terms of its purpose and the difference it, it makes in people's lives, and hopefully, the difference it'll make to the Piru community, um, as a whole. Um, but I don't like that roofline. That's all I got.
Commissioner Onstott.
First of all, I'd like to say I have a great deal of respect for the applicant. Over the years, I've come to appreciate what you have built in the community in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Piru. Uh, all your projects seem to be administered in such a way that reflects highly on your, your, your administration. I have a significant health and safety problem. I may be the only one in the room, but I have it. I don't understand APAC. I understand and appreciate that there are other issues along that boundary line and there are other, there are other residences involved, but we're putting a new residence in, a high-density residential use for which there will be children. And I don't believe the buffer is sufficient to protect those children and those residents. I don't know if it can be done in a better way or not. I'm not an expert. I was appalled that APAC did not communicate with the property owner, Rancho Camulus. That, to me, is just, well, that's unacceptable completely. And the, to impose a notification requirement and, and a, a screen as sufficient is just, to me, it's totally unacceptable. We don't do that anywhere else. I mean, there's a setback requirements, et cetera. Uh, I'm concerned about the health and safety of the residents. That's, that's my concern. I think the project in and of itself, I like it, okay, and God knows we need it, but I am concerned about the health and safety. That, Rancho Camulus has a right to farm. We have a right to farm ordinance. And just because it's zoned residential, somehow we have the ability or the authority to ignore the ag? I don't think so. And it's within a hundred and fifty feet of open space, which gets us to another point. But, but those standards, I'm told, aren't ordinances and they're guidelines. But for me, I have a serious problem, and I would hope that the applicant would look long and hard to see if they can improve the safety situation there. It's clear that, uh, I'm in the minority, okay? But I wish you would look very hard at this issue. Thank you.
It's a good project. I'm not happy with the location and the problems it brings to the, to the fore. Um, I'm real clear on the need for affordable housing. I'm real clear and compassionate about the need for, for low-income housing, uh, in the, everywhere, but particularly in the area, and particularly the impact it has on, uh, the agricultural community and those, those that work in it. Uh, as one of the speakers says, uh, you know, they were, they, uh, they pick lemons and their parents work ag before. Um, I'm sympathetic to that. I mean, my grandparents were ag, and I've picked lemons in my lifetime, so I know what that's all about. Um, but there are a lot of issues, problems with this, with this project that I don't think, I, I, I'm, I'm still wrestling with the mitigation of them. I, I too am disappointed that nobody, uh, APAC didn't speak to the adjacent, uh, property owner who's primary, uh, who's a, who's a member of, of the organization, I assume, and, and certainly is, is ag and is, is working ag as a, as a profession. It's not an issue of, of parking, and although parking is an issue and a problem, that's not what this is about. This is about housing and making, uh, making housing available for those in need. I, I see, I see, uh, continuing problem, um, that's going to, that's going to occur, um, as it relates to parking, unfortunately, because the reality is, I mean, um, the rules are what they are, uh, but life is what it is, and reality is what it is, and this isn't my first rodeo, and it's not your first rodeo either. You've been there, you know what we're talking about. Households do not have, are not necessarily single-family households, there are multiple-family households today, and when you have, and when you have, uh, a number of adults, it's not unusual to have, for each of those adults to have a vehicle that has to be, uh, garage, for lack of a better word, uh, when it's not operating. I also was not aware that, uh, that the, I guess, northeast corner of that property, it butts up against the entrance and exit to the, uh, to the orchard, uh, immediately next door, as we heard from Mr., uh-
Freeman.
Freeman. Earlier. Um, as I look at the pictures, um, that were presented by, I believe, at Mr. Cohen, showing, showing, um, Center Street, um, toward the bridge, um, and that point where, obviously, where Mr. Freeman enters and exits his property, and not that he does it at that point on a daily basis, but it's obviously a primary point of entrance and exit. Um, I, I, there's a potential safety issue. I think, I think there's a, just as a point of, of reference, I guess, and a point of discovery, you know, I come from a thirty-four-plus-year career in law enforcement in this county. Um, I've been through Piru many times, have spent many nights in Piru. I've seen the traffic, the commercial vehicle traffic that goes in and out of Piru. Um, you know, I used to respond to the Bluebird on a weekend, and those of you that have been around for a while probably remember the Bluebird. Um, it's, it's, it's a unique community, uh, and it has an identity, and I think there's, you know, there's a housing need to address that. Um, we've got three or four other projects in the pipe that this commissioner addressed three or four years ago, primarily off of Main, coming into town. Uh, and my recollection is that, that in lieu of, of, um, restricted income housing, they waived that in lieu of fees, if, if, if I'm wrong on that, staff can correct me. And so, I don't think there's anything anticipated in the way of affordable housing, uh, in those particular developments. The, the ag operation next door, the overspray, um, really creates, and I would echo Commissioner Onstott's, uh, concerns, it really echoes a safety issue, particularly for young people. Um, and the ag becomes, next door almost becomes, is today, and will continue to be, an attractive nuisance, if you will, in that kids and young people or anybody is going to go into that area, um, simply because it's there and out of sight for whatever their purpose might be. And, uh, and, and I'm sure the adjacent property owner has had a variety of maintenance problems trying to maintain whatever, whatever, uh, security or control he, that ranch might have on his property. The design is, is different, and I appreciate the, uh, the ecology part of it and the fact that it's going to have a significant, uh, efficiency factor attached to it. Um, I applaud that. I'm not completely, like Commissioner Dukas, I'm not completely comfortable with the overall roofline slope profile that's presented here. I thought, uh, the appropriate thing to do because of this thing next door, this orchard next door would, would be to have, require, even though the CO doesn't require, um, um, require a masonry fence, uh, to create that buffer. Ag says, um, that's not necessarily the best, uh, way to filter out any potential pesticides, uh, so we rely on the, the, uh, cooperation, communication between the, uh, the property owner and the property manager and the prevailing winds to minimize that. I'm troubled by it. I'm troubled by the project. The project, you know, provides everything, but it's almost like it's in the wrong location. And that's where I sit. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, if there's somebody else wants to talk.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the staff recommended actions, including all the exhibits that have been provided with us today. That is my motion.
Before, before we accept your motion, I, I would like to-
I, I have a counter motion, too.
Okay, before we get to that, uh, if I can regress for, just for a second, um, because public safety is an issue and has been talked about, uh, and on a number of different, uh, different fronts, um, I'd like to address Exhibit G, an email that we received, uh, this morning, from someone identified as Dave Wareham to staff, and I'll just read it. Ms. Barrera, I've recently become aware of this project, and this is dated yesterday at four-thirty. My predecessors may have approved the project in staff review stage, but I do have a concern about the thirty-foot Market Street, uh, issue, and that is marked as forty, forty feet in the drawings and no drive-through to the second parking lots. I'm not sure the plans can be changed at this point, but I would like to have the opportunity to have further input. My knowledge-
Who is it?
Uh, somebody, Dave Wareham. My knowledge and belief is that Dave Wareham is the current captain in charge of the Fillmore Station that covers the Piru area. Um, and so, my assumption is that he's speaking on behalf of, of public safety, uh, without having had the opportunity to review these reports. And I know Dave Wareham, um, and so, I, I feel very confident in saying that this email came from Dave Wareham. Uh, staff didn't seem to know who Dave Wareham was when I asked earlier this morning.
I, I would share with you that I would like to continue this matter for thirty days so that we could have some better discussion regarding the buffer zone and now maybe this issue. I, that's, that would be my request.
Mr. Chair-
Okay.
The matter of Rogers-
Commissioner Westner.
Roberts rules. There's a motion on the floor, you need to call for a second.
Right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, um, to move with recommended staff action.
Can I have a vote, please?
So, um, just, just for clarification, if, um, if I voted, uh, no on, no on this, we would have to have a finding, uh, on, on page four of this, uh, staff presentation? We would have to find any of these, one through five, and, and it looks like we're focusing on, the project would have a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety? Is, is that-
That's my position.
That's my position, too.
And, uh, and what would that be based on? The, the, the email? What would that be based on?
No, it's not based on, on the email, because there's no objective information here other than, uh, it's apparent to me that, that this person, uh, this law enforcement person, um, has not had the opportunity to review all the data in these reports, but has a base of experience to-
opportunity to review all the data in these reports, but has a base of experience to verbally express some concern. That's all I'm saying.
Mine is based on a health and safety issue regarding the spraying in the buffer zone, to which I believe the information is incomplete, both from APEC staff, and I want to know if there's a better solution before I vote on this.
Can I just get some direction from County Council?
Yes. Under Government Code 655-89.5, subsection D-2, that's the part of the government code that addresses denial of this sort of project for health and safety reasons. And the most pertinent part of that provision states, "As used in this paragraph, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete." And so, based on that language, my opinion is that, as we've heard previously, the counties' own ag buffer guidelines don't apply to this policy. They're not an ordinance. And so, a denial could not be based on the lack of a buffer because the guidelines don't apply. And so, I would just caution your commission to continue this hearing based upon looking further into the issue because, as the subsection says, the public health, safety standards or policies as they existed at the time the application for this project was made. And so, even if our guidelines were changed tomorrow, a denial still couldn't be based upon them because, as we've heard, the guidelines don't apply to this, to this project as of the date the application was made.
And if I could chime in on County Council, the very last sentence is critical. It says, "Inconsistency with the zoning ordinance or general plan use designation shall not constitute a specific adverse impact upon the public health and safety." So, to chime in with County Council just said, that we cannot use that just because it's inconsistent about the 150-foot buffer, we've zoned RD, all that. So, that cannot be used.
It is ridiculous to ignore the health and safety situation. I'm only asking that the matter be continued so that we can define the situation and see if there is not a more satisfactory way of dealing with what I deem a real health and safety problem. I really don't care, and I'm totally disregarding what I've heard about the requirements of this government code section. We're charged with the health and safety of the residents, and I would like a better I'm asking the matter be continued, not denied.
Question of County Council. We have a motion on the floor. We have a request for continuance. If we move forward with the motion because it was, because it's on the floor, does that preclude us from any continuance? Or are we allowed to consider a continuation prior to the motion that's on the floor?
Well, couldn't the motion be withdrawn if the maker of the motion wanted to?
That could always happen.
The motion could be withdrawn, and it would, it would probably be cleaner to have a motion on the continuance first, and so then you don't have to vote on a substantive motion because it, that's my opinion.
I would concur with County Council. The motion on the floor, so the maker and the second one have to withdraw. Otherwise, the motion has to be voted on because of what the code section, as far as the finding says, it's a denial of the project. So, if we vote up and down right now, and we should not give a majority, that's a denial of the project. All right? If the majority votes for it, it's an approval of the project. So, I am very, I understand what the two commissioners are saying as far as that. It's a situation that is going to continue to face us. There's other properties in the specific area that's going to be faced. However, with that, I am not comfortable withdrawing my motion, so I won't.
Okay, then. We have a motion on the floor to move recommended staff action. And we have a second? We do have a second, Mr. Maggie. No further discussion?
Well, I just want to say I don't like it. I don't like how limited our discretion is. I don't know what other information we could get. What we've gotten today, it doesn't sound like we can deny it. And that's all I have to say.
I've expressed my thoughts also and my apprehensions, and I'm also troubled by the narrowness of our ability to do anything beyond what's in front of us here. With that, I'm prepared to vote. So, we'll take a vote. Motion passes. Cabrillo has a good project. I'm just not comfortable with the problems the location brings to the rest of the community and to those that will reside there. And I would hope you take notice of that. And I would also hope you take notice of the other issues and several issues that come from the adjacent companion property and move to communicate on a regular basis with the community and particularly this, the adjacent property owner that's here before us today. I'm assuming at some point in the future Cabrillo might bring another project before this commission, even possibly in the community of Piru. And so, let's be proactive as opposed to reactive, please. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda. Item 8. Item 8. Do we need to take a break real quick? Okay, we'll continue. Item 8 on the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. The only thing that, a couple of things I want to talk to you about. First, the next hearing that we have is scheduled January 15th, 2015, and that is on a tentative track map. There's only one item so far on that agenda, but that might get more as we move along through December. And then also, the appeal of the planning commission decision for the decor that was supposed to be heard before the Board of Supervisors on December 16th has tentatively been moved to the end of January. So, the board's calendar was full on the 16th, and so that's being moved off until January. I also did want to talk to your commission about a possible site visit that I would like you to go on for a project that will be in front of you probably in February.
Tell me this is Hawaii, right?
No, not in Hawaii. So, sorry. In Moore Park, though, so it won't be so much of a drive for you.
Tigers?
It is. It's a project called Wildlife Environmental Center.
You're right.
It's a project for inherently dangerous animals.
Wildlife.
Wildlife Environmental Center, WEC.
Is that, I know what it is. Is that adjacent to the college?
It's not adjacent to the college.
In that proximity?
It's in proximity, yes. And so, they have applied for a conditional use permit. The mitigated negative declaration has been out for public review, and the public review parade is closed, and we have no comments. So, I think it would be a good idea.
What are the inherently dangerous animals?
Teenagers.
There are four tigers on the property. And there is also a component of, an educational component associated with it, as well as a rescue component associated with it. There's a...
These aren't relocated from Malibu, are they?
They're not. They're not. So, there are, there's a camel, there's a zebra, there's lots of raptors out there. And so, they're asking permission to have those animals out there and then also use them as an educational purpose in having schools come out to the site as well. It's a unique application. It's a unique property, and I think that your commission would be well-served to do a site visit. And so, I'm looking at the possibility of January 29th. And I'm wondering what, if we start to work on that, would that be a good date for you?
It is right now.
Yes. Okay. Then that's all I have, unless you have something for me.
One question on that same topic. The board is being, is in litigation on the Malibu issue related to lions?
That's correct. The board and the county are in litigation, and my office has just finished preparing what's called the administrative record. And so, it's basically all the materials that were before you, your commission and the board. And so, we're actually planning on lodging the record with the court today. And so, the case will be briefed. It will hopefully be set for hearing by March of next year, so that case is proceeding.
Mr. Maggie.
This is my last...
Oh, no. You're not allowed to withdraw, you know?
Yes. I tendered my resignation to the student of last August. Actually, I made my decision. I still have one more year after this, so send them all this project. You live in Hawaii, too? Can I come with you?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Sorry to hear that.
I don't know where it's at. There was a sore run out in Terroja. I have to see where things grab. I don't know where it's at at this point.
Well, sorry to hear that. Certainly, we'll miss you.
Well, I don't miss you.
Well, thank you.
Aw, you don't mean it.
But I tell you what, you guys trust me. I don't agree with you, but this is all right.
Yeah.
If he doesn't get a picture up there, someone might tell the supervisors what he means.
That's very kind of you, but I was told by the current planning director, if I ever quit, she was going to commit suicide. So, I got to live with that.
Well, I would just like to say to that, that Commissioner McGee, that it has just been a real pleasure to have you on the planning commission. You have been a very calm and steady hand, you know, have always just been very concise in your questions, and I've found you to get to the heart of an issue very quickly and listening very intently during the whole hearing. So, I've really appreciated having you on this planning commission, and I think that you, you know, by you being here, you've added a lot of value to what we've done over the last few years. So, I do appreciate your service, and I know it's a lot of, it's a lot of service for all of you. You're definitely not in it for the money.
You're going to miss the money.
And just, you're the vice chair, though. You're the vice chair.
No, I wasn't the vice chair.
Now I know why you quit.
For the record, I will not accept another year on the chair without rotation.
I've said this before.
With that...
So, I guess we'll have to set the 15th to set us vice chair.
God knows who's next.
Are you next?
I'm next.
With that, I think we're adjourned.